I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[14.12][14.12](laughter)
John was pledging from the back for the record. I guess before we get to the agenda tonight, we have some recognition of our students, Dr. Harrison.
Yes, so good evening, everyone, and welcome. And students, you need to stay to the very end of the meeting tonight.[34.47][34.47](laughter) We like having an audience. But we have the great fortune of recognizing the great work of a number of middle school teachers that have really had a tremendous impact on their school community. They've had, of course, some great leadership and guidance from the faculty and administration at the middle school, but they've really been impactful. I had the good fortune of actually going up to Bosse's and watched them give a presentation to many other folks, and they were most impressive that evening. So with that said, I would like to welcome Ms. Chapnick to step forward to acknowledge the sale team from the middle school.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Good evening, everybody. So I'm actually going to turn the microphone over to the students so that they can share with you exactly what they did as members of the sale team, but before I do that, I just want to acknowledge all of them for their extensive work that they did this year in considering the ways that they could make the middle school an even better place for all students and faculty, a place where students feel welcome and comfortable and safe and secure so that they come to school to learn in a culture that supports them and who they are as individuals. So I would like to ask you to stand up. You're just going to walk this way and stand behind the microphone, and I'm going to introduce them as they come up. So this is Daniel Marshall.[121.61][121.61](applause) Josh Hunt.[123.61][123.61](applause) And just turn around. Katie McDaniel.[130.00][130.00](applause) Eva Gilbert.[132.00][132.00](applause) Arushi Parak.[134.00][134.00](applause) Cameron Nacken.[136.00][136.00](applause) Natalie Kletter.[138.00][138.00](applause) Lucas Chu.[140.00][140.00](applause) Annie Horwitz. And Oscar Drink.[143.00][143.00](applause) What's that? I also want to acknowledge the other staff members who are critical in the involvement in sale, and that's Ms. Carol LaBella, sitting in the audience.[161.01][161.01](applause) Mr. Griffin Murray.[164.98][164.98](applause) Danielle Almeida, who's actually on maternity leave right now.[171.68][171.68](applause) And Mr. Sotile and Dr. Core, who both supported this idea right from the beginning.[180.12][180.12](applause)
Sale stands for Students Acting Leadership to promote positive school culture. We, as a team, were committed to improving the IMS school community so that students, teachers, and staff enjoy coming to school. We attended two workshops at the Bosse's headquarters in Yorktown. At these workshops, we discussed important topics related to school climate, including acceptance, self-esteem, and respect. We learned about how to design a survey to get information about our school culture. We took some questions from the survey that Bosse's made, and we added some questions that our team thought applied to Irvington. All IMS students and staff took this survey. We analyzed the data from the surveys and found that our areas of improvement were student self-esteem and people being singled out based on their unique characteristics. We chose to address the issue of raising individual self-esteem because how students felt about themselves and how this impacts how students treat each other. We decided to address the issue by holding an Upstander Week. Our work was framed by two questions from the Character Education Framework: what is community and what defines who we are? At the assembly, we defined what it means to be an upstander, and during Upstander Week, students took a pledge and wore IMS Upstander bracelets, which we all are wearing.[258.72][258.72](laughter) We shared upstander stories during announcements, and students and teachers acknowledged upstander behaviors on post-its and hung these on murals around the building. We held fundraisers to raise money to support Bully Bus and West Cop. An Upstander Week is a way for us to promote individuals' positive self-esteem and create a positive school environment. We conducted a follow-up survey, which showed that our work had a positive impact on the school culture. We presented our work to other sale teams in early May. Thank you to Dr. Harrison, Dr. Core, and Mr. Sotile for supporting the sale project, Mr. Murray, Ms. LaBella, Ms. Almeida, and Ms. Chapnick for being amazing members of our sale team, and also to the members of the Board of Education. Thank you.[301.77][301.77](applause)
I don't know. Yeah, why don't you call them, and as we come around the front, I'll try to find your certificate. Come by, and you can shake our hands, and then we can stand for everyone to recognize you.
So Daniel Marshall.[321.83][321.83](applause) Josh Hunt.[323.83][323.83](applause)
Sorry, Josh.
Katie McDaniel.[326.83][326.83](applause) Eva Gilbert.[328.83][328.83](applause) Arushi Parak.[330.83][330.83](applause) Cameron Nacken.[332.83][332.83](applause) Natalie Kletter.[334.83][334.83](applause) Lucas Chu.[336.83][336.83](applause)
You came dressed up for this. That's great.
Oscar Drink.[340.83][340.83](applause) And Annie Horwitz.[342.83][342.83](applause)
Certainly, thank you, and students, we are so proud of the work that you've done and the ownership that you've taken in the middle school community. And as a little prideful bragging moment for myself, it was great to be able to go up there to Bosse's to watch them in action, but I have to say that we had the best display among all the schools.[359.12][359.12](laughter) So, well done. Congratulations.[362.12][362.12](applause)
All right, moving on.[364.12][364.12](laughter) There we go, yeah. Carol, what can I say? I really know how to clear a room.
Thanks for coming.[369.12][369.12](laughter)
Okay, before I do a motion to accept the agenda, and I appreciate everyone bearing with us, I received some bad news on the way into the executive session today, and I'm going to need to leave the meeting early, and I apologize if you see me -- I had a family member pass away. If you see me emailing and going back and forth, I'm trying to deal with arrangements, so I apologize. I'm not trying to take my mind off of the proceedings, but I just have to deal with it. We're going to move the Section 8 regarding the first read of the policies to right before 14. Okay? So we'll deal with all the business matters and any questions that the board has, and then I'll depart the rest of the board. We'll deal with the policies and the presentation. I apologize to Mr. Lubinski and others who will be presenting tonight for not being able to be here, so Jesse, I apologize. So with that, can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Harrison, District Office.
Yep, just a few quick things. As certainly know, the school year is coming to an end very, very rapidly here, and we have numerous trips and celebrations, some performances that are before us. Remind everybody to stay in touch with the district newsletters, school newsletters, and school calendars to make sure you don't miss out on any important things. But one important thing that I do want to highlight coming up here in our community is on the 14th, where the village will stop and acknowledge Main Street being designated as a historic district and certainly a national and a state landmark now at this point in time. There will be a ceremony at 10:30 a.m. at scenic Hudson Park or Senior Center, depending on weather, and then throughout the community during the day, there'll be numerous activities and events, and we're trying to find an opportunity to have some of our kids participate as well with maybe some musical performances or displays of work. But certainly, some good experience to celebrate our community. I also want to acknowledge, both of our track teams have had a great year of winning their respective titles, but we have a group of young ladies in our four-by-400-meter relay team that consists of Zoe Maxwell, Kiana Lee, Emily Friedman, and Shannon Spencer that are actually have ranked among the top times in the state this year and are headed down to Nationals in Greensboro, North Carolina next week. So they're going to be competing as a team, and then Kiana will also be heading down and will compete individually in the 200 and 400-meter races. So congratulations to those young ladies, and best of luck. We know they'll represent us well at the national competition. And then finally, just to remind the board and the community that preceding the next Board of Education meeting on the 17th, we will have our annual retiree and tenure reception. Good opportunity to certainly welcome those that are going to be with the Irvington family for a long time and celebrate their tenure, but also to thank many talented and dedicated folks who are going to be moving on to the next phase in their career, shall we say, after giving many, many years to the district. So we hope some folks will be able to come out and celebrate with us. Again, 6:30 in the library on the 17th.
That's it. Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone that has comment from the community on anything that appears on the agenda to approach the microphone, and let's hear a comment. Okay, seeing none, there, I guess we're moving to Article 6, a Buildings and Grounds Committee. Is this a report or the presentation?
Hi, Bruce Gray.
Okay, you're going to do the committee report first, and I'll go into the presentation?
One in the same.
Okay. We met on May 29th and discussed a couple of issues. First order of business, we discuss updated figures regarding the bond referendums specifically. DEC, after testing the soil at Mizaris Field, DEC gave us approval that we can reuse that soil for East Field. And the spring, also, in the spring, Land was able to perform some tests on the roof for the gym at the Main Street School because worst-case scenario was that we were going to have to replace it. But the testing that was performed in the spring showed that we actually can restore the roof, so we do not have to do a total replacement. So between the two figures, we are able to reduce the bond referendum by about $300,000. The committee reviewed the Tier 2 projects that are not included in the bond, and our recommendation to the board is to keep the reduction and not add anything else to the bond and reduce the bond amount. That obviously is up for discussion, but that is our recommendation.
Are we talking about this now, or are we going to talk about it when we talk about the bond?
Well, we're going to talk about it with the presentation.
Okay.
So I'm just highlighting the meeting, and then we can get into the specifics. Second order of business, we were discussing district logo. We are going to the summer part of, it's not in the bond, it's part of the operating budget, restoring, we have to fix the gym floor in the campus gym. So since we are stripping it down, the conversation started, do we want to add a logo to the middle like we have similar in some of our other buildings? So that led into a conversation about streamlining our logo. We looked at some logos. Nothing's been decided. We have no recommendations yet for the board.
Hey, I mean, I know this is a conversation that actually Chris started right when he got to the district that we had in communications, just about coming up with, like, PMS cards and inconsistent logo. I mean, it seems like it's a kind of a district thing.
It's a big deal.
I don't know if anything's, yeah, I mean, I don't know if anything's been decided, but, um...
No.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like maybe it's something that...
Kind of prompted the renewal of that discussion.
And is it, this is the first I've heard about it, is the, has a new one been, is the idea we're going to, that the new logo will be designed, or has it already been designed, or...
Well, there's, the different logos are used in different schools and different organizations, and we kind of just want to come up with one logo that is appropriate for students at Dow's Lane, yet aggressive enough for our high school sports teams, you know, to run the gamut for everybody and just kind of brand us, if you will.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that nothing, we, nothing's really been done with that, though, right?
No, no, no. We started the discussion. No, I mean, we talked about it a year, two years ago.
Exactly.
So, I mean, from two years ago till now, it's been like back burner.
Yeah, we were going to tie it to the long-range planning process was the last discussion we had that has not moved. I mean, is this something where, you know, you could get sort of, you know, some of our older art students involved and kind of coming up with something? You know, toss it out as a possibility if anybody wants to take, you know, they might have ideas.
To create something new, you mean?
Yeah.
It's an idea.
Yeah, I think when we look big picture and the branding of the district, I think there's a lot of opportunity there. I think what we're looking at now is to put a logo. We typically, for all of our athletics, utilize a bulldog head, and it's the same variation on the same design. So if we were to put it, stick, it can obviously be in the bulldogs, then we're going to put a bulldog logo on the gym floor. It may certainly be different than a district brand, but to come up with a common look for, that we could have on the gym floor, just to brighten the space and have a little school spirit there.
Okay. The committee was also presented with the school report cards by Bev Miller, which is attached to the agenda for tonight. And then we also discussed the five-year facility plan. This is something that we have to do every year, and next year, so Bev and Gary will work on the facility plans for next year, starting in August, correct? And then the year after that, the architects have to do it. Every five years, we're required to have architects do our facilities plan in accordance with New York State law.
So presumably, that plan will take into account all the work that we're most likely going to do.
Correct.
If the bond is voted on.
And everyone should also know that the projects for future bonds, for any bonds, if you want to put it out for a bond, it has to be in your facilities plan to make it adable in the future.
In the future?
Excuse me?
Oh, okay, okay.
In the facility plan.
Okay, okay.
You just might have, like...
No, no, to me, adable in the future, not in the facilities plan in the future.
No, to make it adable in the future, whatever.
Okay. Even if it's part of a bigger school project, like, say there's five projects in the bond, and one of them is not in the facilities plan, will that render that piece not adable, or will that render the whole project?
It would render that piece not adable, but usually, you know, you try to incorporate everything into those plans.
Yeah, but what does it take to put something in a plan? Just write it down.
It just has to be there.
It has its own page.
Yeah, okay. So, for example, we, you're getting the facilities plan for this year done now, right? And so then it'll, unless somebody really screws up, it'll be there for October when we do the bond. It's a good way of saying it. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward to do this.
All or if not all of them are currently in the 1314 facility plan.
Yeah, essentially, everything is there already. Yeah, but it isn't like we had to have figured this out all out a year ago in order to know. I mean, it's just, it seems pretty simple.
Why can't I open it?
Were you good?
Yep.
I thought I was.
Now I'm sick, I'm not moving.
So as a brief overview of the bond, we've through a certain, very deliberate and lengthy focused process, we have taken great effort to arrive at the list of projects before you and the related costs. We can see the figure that has been reduced by approximately $300,000, as Mrs. Cash can reference before, because of the savings associated with the East Field soil cap, being able to reuse soil from Mizaros Field and being able to have a more economical solution to dealing with the roof replacement at the Main Street School gym. So these projects should look familiar to members of the community, the Board of Education, because we have talked at length about them. But as a reminder, we had a number of other projects that were a part of this discussion along the way, and in doing so, we want to just to highlight the items that have not been included for recommendation in the bond. And as you can see, that is looking at converting the upper gravel lot here at the campus to a traditional parking lot with the installation of lights. The renovation of two bathrooms here in the original high school building, the intent here, and you'll see the asterisk following the description, is to provide for these renovations within the operating budget. We have the boys bathroom actually included in the 1415 budget. Following the bathrooms, we have installing speed bumps here on the campus. That is something that will be addressed through the operating budget, but after all the construction has been completed. The installation of radiator covers at Main Street School, the conversion of the mar gym to LED lights, as it was not a primary space and the quality of light wasn't as poor as it was in the campus gym. Also, looking at the campus lighting project, which was discussed, which would rewire lighting throughout much of this building, enable us to shut off the lights at night, but certainly the cost savings was not there. In one consideration, we're looking at actually constructing a storage shed, which would be an actual building at Mizaros for the storage or the maintenance equipment, at the cost of nearly $110,000. That was not deemed to be a wise investment, and we felt that we would be able to purchase a shed and put down a concrete slab in lieu of spending $110,000. So just taking a look at the impact of the capital project, so when we look at the new annual debt service, it would be nearly $400,000. So that's the debt service associated with this bond package, which would be the facilities and athletic fields as well and the track. But at the same time, we have the good fortune of having debt that is retiring. So as one will come off our plate, another will arrive. The retiring debt is a sum of $315,000. So you can see the net estimated impact in the first year would be $84,000. So we would see debt service increase year one, $84,000. We anticipate that that would have an estimated increase of $28 on the average home valued at approximately $700,000. However, as we move through in future years, that figure of $84,000 and that $28 annual increase will likely be offset by the building aid that we'll be able to begin to receive from the state of New York, but that money doesn't arrive year one. So that's, we have to take a look at what that impact is year one for our community, and that is...
And Chris, is that 24% on the 4.6 million?
Correct.
That's a big number.
Correct, yes, it's a large sum. So definitely, we'll see that 84,000, the impact certainly will likely disappear. So, but, you know, so we have to look at, as I said, year one, $84,000, $28 per average household, but the good fortune down the road is that that'll likely disappear once we start receiving our aid.
We're having the old, I just thought of this, so I don't expect you to know this offhand, but what's the old debt that's coming off for, was it Dow's Lane renovation-related?
No, it was for tax certs.
Tax certs, okay.
It's on cert line?
It was for tax, it was bonded tax certs.
Oh.
From how long ago, do you know?
I couldn't tell you exactly.
Yeah.
I would say probably 10 years.
Is that how long those bonds typically are?
Well, I'm just guessing, it's either 10 or 15. I don't have that figure right off the top of my head.
Yeah, okay, okay. So that, I think that just answers my other question, was this a, yeah, okay. So there wouldn't have been aid attached to that, unlike, if that, those bonds had been for renovating Dow's Lane or something, there might have been aid that would also be coming off as counter, but there isn't because they were...
There's no FIA coming off.
Tax certs, yeah, okay. So that's, that's the full set of numbers to that same point, okay. One other question? I'm sorry, I interrupted you, so maybe you want to finish first. Okay. My other question was on the soil we're saving, the cost we're saving for soil in that's going, going to be taken from Mizaros up to East Field. How much of the East Field soil is that going to account for, do you know? I mean, it was...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
As far as volume? Yeah, because we need whatever we need for East Field. Are we going to get all of it from Mizaros, or like halfish?
No, we're getting some of it.
As a percentage of it?
Yes, I don't have the old figure here, but I can send you the old estimate versus the new, and it's got the cubic yards on it.
Yeah, like I said, I didn't, you know... The dollar amount is $160,000 with the purchase of clean-tested soil and the carting of the old soil. And that'll cut down on some truck traffic, except for between Mizaros and East Field, but we'll have to have some, whatever, excavation, okay.
Is this, I mean, back up, I'm saying, I guess, first of all, in my thoughts, a long agenda, so I'm going to try to keep my comments short, but it is a very rich agenda, and there's a lot of issues that I think are important. And the other thing is, I, as you know, find that, I always feel that conversation amongst the board tends to get the district to a better place as opposed to responding to emails and having that be the driving force. So I have comments on just the bond. I mean, I was under the impression that we were going to have a discussion as a board about the amount that is being suggested for the bond, and as I've said in the past, and even said when you talked to me about it, I mean, I, you guys are making a recommendation, and I thought then the process was that we, as a board, would have a discussion about that and then decide, and majority will rule, of course, as always. But, and so that's kind of, you know, in the long emails that went out last night, I apologize for the timing, I have a hard time sometimes on weekends getting to all these things and reading them, and mindful that you want to hear my comments before the meeting, so I try to get everything out as soon as I can. It might not be by Sunday, though. But that being said, I wanted to talk about the bond and, you know, the fact that the recommendation, which, you know, I expect you guys, and I know you put a lot of work in, but, you know, I had some thoughts myself that I would like to share and bring up for discussion. And I think that, you know, we're going to go for a bond once, and I think it's very important to the district, and I feel a little bit like it's getting rushed at the end right now, and I feel like it deserves a discussion if it, you know, if it makes sense. Well, so jumping in, my thoughts on the bond, when, you know, Maria called and shared the information that we're going to save money based on the two issues that you identified. So I know we had a kind of a target limit in mind, we didn't want to go over 5 million initially, but now we're significantly less. And now you look at also the fact about the building aid, which is 24% of building aid on the projects, is an interesting number. So my two thoughts were, one is, I look at that girls' bathroom, and I generally like to see money in the budget popping out in the classroom, and if there's a way to possibly get something for $80,000 added to the bond, it seems a very small part of the bond, it will have a negligible impact on the tax levy to people, but it would also free up money next year when we might be in a more tight situation with the budget. That's one.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
The money that is being used for the bathrooms comes out of Gary's budget. It's not a budget that is coming out of the kids. He has a set budget every year, we could increase it, we could decrease it, but he has projects, he does, that doesn't come to us, you know, projects that think that gets fixed...
Capital budget, it comes out of the capital budget.
Right, that gets fixed in the school on a yearly basis, and this was something that he felt very comfortable, that he could put into his budget year one, next, for this coming up year, and then the following year, because what you have to realize is, A, the bathrooms can only get renovated during the summer, and they need SED approval. So if we go for SED approval for the bond and these bathrooms, it's going to come through May-ish of next year, I think is the target date. We couldn't do that work now anyway. So if we target it and it happens next summer, the money was allocated from this operating budget, 1415, and then it's budgeted for the following year, and it both happens that summer. It's not being taken away from the students, it's part of his budget.
Okay, that's helpful to know, but two comments of that, as I think I asked of this question, and I think she did get back to us, whereas if we put...
small part of the bond. It will have a negligible impact on the tax levy to people, but it would also free up money next year when we might be in a more tight situation with the budget. That's one.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
The money that is being used for the bathrooms comes out of Gary's budget. It's not a budget that is coming out of the kids. He has a set budget every year. We could increase it, we could decrease it, but he has projects, he does, that doesn't come to us, you know, projects that-
Capital budget. It comes out of the capital budget.
Right, that gets fixed in the school on a yearly basis. And this was something that he felt very comfortable, that he could put into his budget year one, next, for this coming up year, and then the following year. Because what you have to realize is, A, the bathrooms can only get renovated during the summer, and they need SED approval. So if we go for SED approval for the bond and these bathrooms, it's going to come through May-ish of next year, I think is the target date. We couldn't do that work now anyway. So if we target it and it happens next summer, the money was allocated from this operating budget, 14-15, and then it's budgeted for the following year, and it both happens that summer. It's not being taken away from the students, it's part of his budget.
Okay. That's helpful to know, but two comments of that, as I think I asked of this question, and I think she did get back to us, whereas if we put something in the bond, there's no statute of limitations about when we needed to actually begin the work. So if we put this in the bond, then I thought that we had this conversation, initially you said you thought we had to-
You have to expand a certain percentage within a certain timeframe of the bonding, but you have up to five years to ban.
Five years to what?
To ban.
You can ban, you can do bond anticipation notes for five years in anticipation of going out formally issued bonds.
Is that what we're thinking of doing? I'm sorry.
Usually, not for five years. Usually, it's standard procedure to do a ban for like one year, because you don't know what your actual dollar amount's going to be until actually everything is awarded. You don't want to bond for more than you actually need.
There's like a temporary period before we actually go out for the larger bond.
But we, well, we ought to, I don't know when we have to decide that issue, because that seems-
Does it have to be one bond, or are we just getting the community to say we can, we can borrow up to this month?
You can do multiple bonds, but it's very expensive to do a bond, going out with it, you know, advertising it and doing fiscal advisors and the legal. It's very expensive.
Okay. So are we then saying, see, I thought we had the ability to bond it and, you know, not actually draw the money down until we needed it to actually start construction. So throw it in the mix, but not, but maybe we don't, because I may have misunderstood what you said.
Isn't the objective to get the work done in the bathrooms as quickly as possible? Right?
Well, it's going to need to be done, and there's a ton of stuff. So the capital budget is better than the academics, but still, there's plenty of things that could take-
So I guess my point there is that the plan that we've laid out in Buildings and Grounds is that these two bathrooms would be done as soon as possible relative to SED approval, which means they would both be done next summer.
And that can't happen if it's bonded?
No, it can't happen if it's bonded, but the point is, I mean, because John had made a point along, let me just finish, that we wouldn't want to borrow, we don't necessarily want to pay interest on something that we feel that we can handle through our operating budget. That was a point that John made like six board meetings ago. That was what the impetus was for taking the bathrooms out in the first place.
Right.
And you're suggesting putting them back in and possibly paying interest on it, because everything seems like the numbers work out.
The impetus was also that, you know, some concern that we may, we may face, given, given the fact that especially personnel costs are kind of baked into our operations is going up well above the tax cap, normal tax cap level every year, we're likely to face, we got relatively lucky this year with our tax cap, but we're not likely to be lucky two or three times in a row, that we might face pressures. So putting one-time things like bathrooms in the budget was a way to avoid, you know, building in things that we'd have to unwind, like laying off people, for example, next year, which we really don't want to do. The issue, the only other thing I want to add to this is, isn't this, isn't the, your guys' Buildings and Grounds plan on the bathrooms contingent on our being able to have room in the, I think I have the numbers right, the 15-16 budget for the girls bathroom? The 14-15 budget has the boys bathroom in it. I don't know why boys are before girls, but-
It's in worse condition.
Okay. Yeah, it's rough in those boys rooms, I've been there. So, but we'd have to have room in the next year's budget to do the girls bathroom, and if we're under a lot of pressure, we might want that room for something else. And if we have it in the bond, then we don't have to worry about that. And we do have a little bit of wiggle room in the 15-16 budget, that $80,000 to use for something else, or to keep something we might otherwise have to cut. So that, that's why, I mean, what Robin's suggesting has some appeal, I hadn't thought about it really, but it had some appeal to me, just because you're not, we can't really be sure about what the operating budget will bring in a year.
That's kind of the gist of it, right?
One more.
That's kind of the gist of it, though, the argument.
No, I got it. I heard the argument then, and in fact, I think I was also in favor when John first said it, of, yeah, that makes sense. But now, given what's transpired, now that we're sitting here today, some of the data points are different than they were when we looked at it four months ago or three months ago. And so now, kind of looking at the picture, it seems like it might be worthy of consideration. The other point, in terms of the size of the bond, two questions, one question, you mentioned to John, I think, about monies that we paid upfront to land for work that they've done prior to the bond. And I think we've always talked about being able to roll that into the bond. So is that all included in the 4.6 million calculation?
No, the amount that's previously been paid, you can roll into for state aid purposes, okay?
Okay.
So we would get that-
So it's aidable.
Aidable, okay.
But we're not actually going to roll it into the bond, okay?
No.
Of course, because we paid it. That makes no sense, okay.
All right.
Yep. But then the second, the other piece was, and it's a comment that I think I made, and I was told, oh, we'll look into that, but I never saw anything about it, was my strong feeling in listening to the Fields Committee and everyone else, that in order for this to be successful, which is I think why we're doing this, we want to have fields and we want to be successful, that they are in good condition and stay in good condition, that in order for this all to work, that Dow's Lane's fields, upper and lower, need to also be part of the mix. And if we end up not taking care of Dow's before, during, or after this project, then we're probably not going to do ourselves any favors when it comes to the new fields that we're creating. So I think I had asked if we could take a look at perhaps including some money, if you look at Dow's fields, to ensure that, you know, they're in good shape as well. And I think the comment was, we'll get back to you on that, and I don't think I've ever seen anything on that. So I guess I asked the same question that I asked three months ago, which is, it seems to make sense to me if we're going out with this project, and again, I don't anticipate that we're going to go out for another bond in the next year or two, that we perhaps consider incorporating some monies for Dow's Lane field, so that we, all the fields are, you know, working and serviceable.
My recollection is that they did get back to us, actually, and they said that they did not feel that the amount of money that was required for those fields was significant, and therefore it didn't need to be part of the bond, it would be handled through whatever operating budgets that we would have.
Okay, so-
That's my recollection as well.
Okay. So then that, then I, no, no, that's fine, I don't remember that, but then that's fine, then my comment would be the same as the bathrooms, which is, again, I guess now, I'd say from this vantage point, given that we have a little more wiggle room in the bonds, we thought we'd be much closer to our cap at the time, and that, does it make sense to put this in? Because we can't keep paying for everything out of the operating budget. At some point, that's going to not work out the way we planned, because emergencies are going to come up and, you know, things are going to happen. It just, and it seems like this is a fields project, and I believe that if we're talking about things like irrigating one of the fields, it's not that significant a dollar amount in terms of rolling it into the bond, it might be more significant if we have to-
I think irrigation was off the-
For Gary, Dow's Lane already has irrigation and drainage, so-
At the upper.
Lower.
Not lower.
No, not lower.
Right, that needs testing.
And so for Gary, that, the whole problem with Dow's Lane upper right now is it's just overused. And he said, when it was originally redone in 2010, it never got the rest period that it needed, so it's always been struggling to grow grass ever since. So once the Mizaros field and Eastfield get put back to full use, he's hoping that the upper, Dow's Lane upper, will have a rest period or not as much use, and then they can treat it better. The Dow's Lane lower, we looked into irrigation for that, and that's very problematic, because it's going to cost an enormous amount of money, because land, just did a preliminary, we didn't do soil testing or anything like that, because it's very expensive. But preliminary, they don't believe that the water lines, the public water lines are big enough to allow for irrigation system to be installed in the lower lane. So we would have to put in all new underground water lines, water pipes, in order to do that.
Did anyone then take a step back and say, well, then, are there any other solutions to getting that field in a good condition and serviceable for the long run?
He did recommend an above-ground, like hose system, which would not take as much water at a time. And that could be just done out of Gary's general budget, because he thought it'd be about like $10,000.
Yeah, we discussed this sort of meeting, they talked about the same ones they use in, in like random fields and even in, whatever saying, even in grape-growing regions, they use it, it's a sprayer that sprays, we talked about this.
Yeah. So then, okay, so that doesn't make sense to use that for any, and there's no other work that needs to be done. I thought we talked about how the grading of the field isn't great in Dow's Lane, at some point, we talked about that?
No, there was a discussion about expanding it, but we can't.
Well, we can't expand upper, right, right.
We can't expand lower either, because there's a hill, and then there's property behind there. There's nowhere to expand.
Okay, so there's no, in terms of anything we could do to improve Dow's Lane, you're all saying, there's nothing really-
We need to bring the other fields online to provide adequate time to rest them and to give it its attention. Part of the savings also is, and I don't remember the number, if this bond goes through, the, all the monies that we've been spending into Mizaros for the seed and all of that sum, that was a big chunk, that was a nice substantial amount of money. Gary won't be spending out of his maintenance budget anymore. So that, you know, he's got wiggle room to address the needs, but we can't really address those needs until we take action on the other fields. Unfortunately, you know, you can't rest fields and then have two other fields, it's just not going to work. So that's why it's like a Plan B, it's on the back burner.
Then you're all of the opinion that there's, there's nothing, there's really nothing we can do now, and there's nothing we should, there's not, like in three years, we're not going to come back and say, oh, we want to spend X amount on Dow's Lane. It's like, no, the only thing we would do is bring the hose system in, and other than that, it's just resting the fields and good maintenance.
Seeding and all of that, you know, aerating, you know, good maintenance program.
Okay. Okay. And then my last question on the field, is in looking at the numbers for Mizaros and for Eastfield, I do have a question about the general conditions. There's, I asked, you all got copies of this, I asked Bev, I said, for me, if I'm going to vote on a $4.6 million bond, I like to see the numbers before. So I just wanted to, again, revisit-
You want to see the breakdown of the-
The breakdown of Mizaros and East. Like things like, like when John, honestly, it's a while ago, like when, you know, when we're saying, what are we irrigating, and the organic infill, it's nice to see it all out. I mean, this is our one shot at doing this, I don't want to miss anything if I, you know, I want to be more thorough. So anyway, I'm looking at it, there's a section at the bottom of both of them called general conditions, and I just find it odd, it's contractors' percentage, construction cost contingency, and then AE design and contract administration.
Let me explain those to you?
Well, no, I understand what they are. I guess I just find it odd that on each field, the percentages are not the same. And I am questioning why our contingencies are, right, one is the 10%, one is 15%, one is 10%, and the contract administration and AE design, one is 6%, one is six and a half. It's just normally, they'd be the same.
They wouldn't be.
Normally, the architectural percentage is 7%. We negotiated it down, okay? Mizaros field is going to need less work than Eastfield, because you're putting in the artificial turf. There, you're still dealing with DEC and DOH on Eastfield, so there's going to be more architectural work involved in that, so it's a little bit higher percentage.
So we're paying them, so we're not paying them a flat percentage on the project overall, we're just paying them a different percentage on each project.
Most of them are a different percentage than it would have been, 7% flat all out, but then we negotiated them down to six or six and a half.
Okay.
And then the construction contingency is if there's change orders, if they find anything wrong, and it's a little higher against for Eastfield because of DEC, DOH, once they start putting something in, and we're also dealing with irrigation for field point, that if there is a problem, then you've got a little bit higher contingency to deal with that.
So it says contingency is, I mean, you definitely know more than negotiate about me, but my feeling is contingency is a percentage of the project, so I would assume most things are, you put in the same contingency.
It's not, that's-
Different project, you put in different contingencies.
Absolutely. It's all over the board, and it's based upon a guest, it's a guesstimate of doing similar projects.
So what, 15 and 10 is a big difference?
Well, I think where the difference is, is looking at the fact that we're dealing with the construction debris at Eastfield, and that if there are complications, that the fixes may be much more expensive, and that, and how they'd have to work around things or to manage particular aspects of the work, if there are problems that surface during the scope of the construction.
And it doesn't mean that the contingency is going to be spent in any, any manner, it's just making sure that there's enough, when you do the construction contract, the general contractor, since it's going to be a guaranteed maximum price contract, wants to make sure that there's enough money in the contract to perform the work.
Remember, these aren't final bids.
Right, no, there is no bids out.
No, there's no bids.
This is just estimates to roll up to the 4.6, and then we get approved-
The actuals are going to be, right, we have an actual.
We have to go back out and actually bid it all out, and they could come in lower.
So you're saying, okay, so you're saying when they bid it out, whoever they're bidding to might come in with a different contingency?
I don't know about that, but they might come in at a different price.
Well, I can, they, the bidder won't come out with a contingency. If, for example, if you're looking at Mizaros, okay, and he put in an estimated cost of $35,000 for finished stone, well, the bid may come in as part of that for $40,000, so that other $5,000 would come out of that cost contingency that we've built in.
Okay, but right, but the bids, right, that contingency is set, that's ours with land, that, like, the bids are going to be above that line.
Yes.
Those items are, the general contractor is 8% of, is it 8% of the project that the cost that gets bid out, or is it 8% of what we're coming up with now?
The contractor, GC, that is basically their markup, their percentage. That's up to bid too. When it goes out to bid, a vendor may come back and say that their profit margin is not going to be 8%, it may be 7, could be 9. That's what they're doing as an industry standard he put in there.
Yeah, and remember, the purpose of the bond referendum resolution and these numbers is good faith estimates upon which we could put out a bond referendum, so that we could say, we're not saying to the community by any means that we're going to spend $4.6 million, or that these numbers are written in stone, because these contracts haven't been let in accordance with law. What we're merely saying is, is we're asking for a resolution to say that we will not ask the community for more than the $4.6 million. So to a certain extent, whereas questions about all of this are proper, of course, and to understand the numbers, it's still a little bit premature, because these are not the actuals. They're still the good faith basis upon which we're coming up with the 4.6 number.
Then I guess the one question that remains is just back to the bathroom, does it make sense to put the bathroom in?
And just to be clear, you're talking about the one bathroom out of the 15-16 budget? Because the other one's already in.
Yeah, yeah, we've budgeted for the boys bathroom in the 14-15 budget already.
And also, we're talking about what, $25,000 bucks?
$80,200.
Eighty? Eighty, yeah, yeah. Both bathrooms cost identical amounts.
I'm comfortable keeping it in Gary's.
Slightly different fixtures, I guess.
Well, the idea was that we wanted to accrue this tonight as part of our schedule.
Right.
Well, we could change that number, right?
Well, I'm uncomfortable with just changing it, because it also, you have to change some of the wording, because the wording, which was drawn up by our attorneys, outlines the, some of the projects, so I'm not comfortable changing legal-
Well, let's see whether, well, before we get to that point-
Well, I, if, I think the decision should be made independently with the right decision, and I think if they need to adjust the wording after, they could do that.
Well, yeah, but I agree with you.
Until they do not make the right decision.
No, I agree with you. So I guess is there, is there impetus on the board to revisit the one bathroom?
Where is it here on the agenda? I'm having a hard time opening it.
It's right under the Buildings and Grounds.
Under A, resolve or detail some more.
Pop up.
I think it's been slow these days.
It wasn't popping up.
Not a huge deal, but doesn't-
I'd like, I think it's a sensible thing to do, to add it in. The girls bathroom, it, basically, for the reasons I said, it gives us a little bit of wiggle room in next year's budget, it protects us, it guarantees for us that we'll do the second bathroom, rather than letting it possibly fall victim to budgetary pressures next year. And it's, you know, it's not going to get us above a higher headline number like 5 million- It's likely to create a higher level of public concern than we've had.
Yeah, I guess my thought is on that, and that is, that is one side of the argument. The other argument is that it's $80,000 bucks in almost $55 million budget. I'm not very concerned if the professionals are telling us that they have the ability to build it in. I don't think it's going to have an impact at that time on the overall budget in such a way that we really need to contemplate changing what we've done so far and pay interest.
I don't think the professionals have told us that they have the ability to build it in. I think we just assumed they have.
No, it's Gary, no, it's Gary's budget, and it's something he told us.
But assuming we don't decide to cut Gary's budget because we need the money.
Well, I mean, you know, again, you can go down, you can go down a rabbit hole on that one, right? I mean, we can cut everything if we wanted to, but let's assume we're not going to do that, and therefore, we should have the $80,000 to do it.
But didn't we, did we not, was the $80,000 for the boys' bathroom not an addition, a consideration, quote unquote, consideration for the 14-15 budget, or did that just come out of the standard buildings and grounds budget?
No, it was added at your recommendation.
Yeah, we added it to Gary's budget.
Oh, to Gary's, we did add it?
Yeah.
So we're keeping it, right.
Yeah, one's in.
Yeah.
So year over year, there would be no increase because it's in there for next year?
Right, right. But if we, but we have big increases in other things coming down the pike, and we're going to.
Well, so you'd have to say, well, we're going to remove it from his budget and decide now to pay interest on that $80,000. That's really the decision you'd be making. I'd rather keep the 80 into the budget.
Can I just ask again, I'm sorry, the resolution here, besides changing the number, what is it exactly, the wording that you're not considering?
Well, I'm just, I'm just concerned because in A, where our legal attorneys put down, you know, including improvements to the heating, ventilation, air conditioning, roof replacements, it does say interior reconstruction and space reconfiguration, but I'm not, you know, I want to make sure, because it also says entrance vestibule, athletic and recreation improvements. They're just very specific about.
It's all in the bottom of the under-resolve. It's general language, and this could, from a legal standpoint, stand in, but the point is that we're going to, they're going to need to redo it. We're basically not going to be able to vote on the thing tonight until we get to the final language.
Can we vote on it?
Well, can we, before we get to that, is there support for it? I mean, I guess I'll pull everybody, John.
I would, yes, I support it.
Okay, Rob, Maria, I'm sorry, Maria.
No, I don't support it because I don't want, it's going to table this decision for tonight. With all due respect, I think this is my opinion. I've been in the buildings and markets, and I hear you're saying about, but I'd rather.
Okay.
So I just don't.
I don't know.
If you want us to table this decision, it's an idea, I'm not even, it's not, but basically saying that there really wasn't any. You're not table it because there wasn't time to change the documents related. It's really unsettling from, from my perspective, having not read on the buildings and ground. So it's the recommendation, and it's really not a recommendation because, you know, I'm not going to change anything of the recommendation.
I didn't realize that we were limited in changing the mortgage.
It's not going to be significant, and that money is a significant, that's, I mean, because of that materiality, it was a material sum that we would not be able to pay for any other way, then I would say, well, that would warrant, especially $80,000 is not significant. It might be paid out of the bond anyway, or the money is because there will be a significant amount of contingency across the board. There might be savings once the, once it gets bid out, you know. Are we, are we, I'd love to use that in other than what's in the resolution, like Phil's saying, that it's.
If it's, if it's generally incorporated under a general statement, you could, right?
Right, yeah.
Depends on the language.
Depends on the language of the bond resolution.
But that would be, if the language of the bond resolution was sufficient in general to allow that, would it not be?
Well, but the point is, and we discussed this also one time when we talked about this, is that you don't want to be in a situation where you're asking the voters to vote on the bond and you're not being specific about what you're doing, because if you're, you know, if somehow.
Yeah, we have, we have a number of months to be specific with the word.
No, I think the language here has to be specific.
Is it a legal question or is it a communication?
No, it's a legal question.
Okay, so then I'm just.
And to be clear, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we, you know, this thing about not changing the language, I don't think that's the point, honestly. I couldn't care less about changing the language or not.
That has been your objection.
Right, I mean, my objection is that I think this was discussed, and it's not a big enough deal to maybe change now.
Well, there's.
You know, the language began. We could approve it if there's support, just to say that we're approving it subject to that change in language to reflect the 80 grand and that.
Sorry.
Yeah, so, you know, again, I, you know.
I agree, it's a relatively minor issue. I don't, you know. So does anyone change their, Maria?
No, I mean, interior reconstruction, I think we're covered under the regulations.
Okay.
I have to say that I did not realize, this didn't show up like this. He just did something. I swear, I was just looking at this. This was not here. I kept looking, I go, where is this language? Because I thought that the bond was a number. I did not realize that this is actually spelt out a little bit more. It's still vague, but I did not real, I thought we were just voting on a number.
Well, effectively, we are, but we're also saying what that number's going to be used for.
I don't tell you what everyone is, but I did not realize it was incorporated into the resolution. When I read it, this is not.
So is there?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, it's okay, Rob, move on.
Yeah, I just want to, just want to make sure, I did ask about the land costs. Do you feel that we're using, can I make those numbers work out?
Yeah.
Sure.
And I'm happy to read for you.
Yeah.
Sure.
I have them here somewhere.
I asked, basically, how much money is yours?
Here it is.
And the answer is that we expect, that expected, but you expected, you said you $218,661 from the bond.
Correct.
And that's basically a very calculated number of centuries of the project.
Right, correct.
And then additional money that we've already paid land and incurred in obligations to them, total another $248,661.
Correct.
And that money generally came out of fund, fund out, in the management.
Correct.
And went through all these field work.
Right, and that was the DEC meetings, the Fields Committee meetings. It also included a rejected project because we originally went out for the Main Street radiators and lighting together, and it was rejected because it came in too high. But now, now that lighting is part of this project, so, and it also included all of the Eastfield analysis, et cetera.
All right. So it's, so it's totaled in the ball, our $465,000, land, security, budget. I think it's, I think it's going to transparent.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, what is, what's the term of a long fund?
It would go out for about 15 years, but we have not done that yet.
No, no, but that's.
But norm is 15 years.
Okay, so I guess we're done on this point, and the GQ presentation, so we can move on to item seven, which is the adoption of the secret resolution and call for special meeting. Would I just take a motion on this to approve?
Individually.
Individually?
Thank you.
I have to clarify, I want to clarify, yeah, one question. The language is very specific. We said the board has determined a maturity, basically, there's a board decision, and I just clarify, my comment earlier was, was that I don't know anything, and I wanted to make sure that the different documents are on file that said that someone formally advised us. So I guess we got an email today, I guess we got an email today from Michael, the outline that he's kind of advising us about, and the documentation for trial. I guess my other question is, because you also said land advised us that, that as well. Do you have anything from them that formally tells us that they felt like it was a type two as well?
It was through consultation between Michael Bogan, our attorney, and Land, and Michael ultimately made the determination utilizing the data that was available and the scope of the project from Land.
Okay, I just, me personally, all my money is to make sure that it's in the file. Before I was going to say, please, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, what, sorry, did I miss this? Where was this email?
This email, Beth sent, me some emails. Chris Dunn forwarded me, I guess he talked to Michael when he sent the one, the email, outlining.
So I just.
She sent it this afternoon.
Yeah. I just don't think anybody would ask the question, but I think, so I'm not almost sure, I'm also, I just want to.
Okay, I guess, I guess I'll pull the board on this one, John?
No, no, not for the secret.
Oh, we don't need to pull for the secret?
No, just a motion.
Oh, okay, so can I get a motion to approve section 7.1?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John?
I don't.
Okay, four in one extension?
Extended, see you.
Okay, on section 7.2, the bond referendum, which we've been discussing, can I pull the board for this? John?
Yeah.
Maria?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Robin? And I vote yes, that's five zero. As I said at the beginning, folks, we're going to skip the policies. There's a lot of stuff on the consent agenda. The policies will come after we do the consent agenda. I guess what I'd like to do, because there's a lot to make the board opportunity to comment, I think, is to take them, instead of altogether, take them by section. So, does anybody have any questions on section 10?
Ten, does someone make a motion for it? I know you pulled the board, but no, I mean.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Rewind. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the bond resolution? John, second?
Second.
Bill?
Yes.
And I guess I'll, should I pull the board again now that we have a motion?
So, yeah.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Robin?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Thank you, thank you, sorry about that. Okay, so section 10, we have some minutes, some tuition, and board of registration. Anything there that we need to discuss? Have a motion to approve section 10 of the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. We'll take section 11. Anything on the CSE, CPSE actions? Have a motion to approve section 11?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Section 12, the personnel matters. Is there anything that we need to discuss there?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, who do you want to, should we just pull out, maybe?
Do you want to do pullouts and then vote on the rest of the new?
That's fine. So I'd like to pull out, well, it's a little complicated.
I think we should do each one at the original, because we can say, did we say 12? I think that, that important, I think, is to make comments about, you know, the agenda appointment, I think this is, hopefully, it can be, we can do, and, and just the other items, I think, will be mentioned as well.
So at least, at least 12, one through 12.6.
Okay, well, let's do it. On 12.1, we are voting on the tenure appointments of Beth Miller, Randy Littenwalter, our Dowsley principal, Joan Burns, Diane Cassidy, Nicole Dama, and Melissa Lugano. I'd like to congratulate, hopefully, all of you after the vote, and that's right. Any other discussion? Okay, I've got the motion to approve 12.1. All those in favor?
Aye.
John, do you weigh the motion?
No.
Bill, you're sounding the same.
Okay, section 12.2, we want to resolve to accept the resignation of Raina Corr as principal of Main Street School, as we are in a future resolution approving, hopefully approving her as our continued superintendent for instruction, I apologize. Any comment on 12.2?
Yeah, this is something I'm, but, and this is interrelated, so it's, I think, I, I think I have three concerns. I don't know if considering document versus, which I could, if that's not the issue, but there are, I think, approach slash philosophy questions, I feel like, and be prepared about my objection. One of them has, well, and one is on the search process and, go back to transparency, we had a superintendent in the search process, makes me basically not comfortable with how that was done, and the board had no, no, no view at all of that. And I was, I was told, I was worried, let's have to hear and deal with it, and I'm left to judge the outcome. So I'm left to judge the outcome. And I have, you know, unfortunately, a lot of disagreement about, a lot of disagreement and discomfort with philosophy, and how we're doing, according to the instruction. Again, not a personal thing, I, but I disagree with philosophy, so I didn't, too, not approve, not vote, you know, this is not, you know, we've broken seven pieces, but that's why the board did not, never reach an importance, they never reached a consensus, never really bargained out a proper process to try to reach a consensus. I'm not sure we could have, but we didn't. So, I mean, I guess it's important to acknowledge that we didn't reach that consensus as easy as we did.
I can really, I don't know what to say, I don't know if it's not, but I feel like we were deprived of the opportunity to try to reach a consensus. And not, I don't expect me to reach a consensus, but I expect that we didn't have the opportunity to try it. And not, I feel like a lot of support after the board.
Did you hear me?
Nothing.
She said, I feel like. In my opinion, we didn't have that process. We just weren't able to reach consensus. But we can't say that we didn't have a process. We attempted to, just reaching consensus doesn't mean process doesn't exist. Inter.
I, I may differ. If we agreed that we were going to think about something before taking action, I would expect that that's what would happen, as opposed to actions were taken on the, or some of the work, I think, but not all of the work. I mean, that's the topic.
No, I have a bit, I have a bit of issue where we're going here. I think, I think you're speaking about things that probably. you're speaking about things in public, dealing with the executive session issues, I think you're talking about issues relating to the review of personnel, which is not proper to do in public. You know, regardless of your point of view about how the system was run, in fact, the system was run similar to the system that we run for other administrators, running as long as I've been on the board. And noting your disagreement with that and your desire, I think, to come, and I think it takes a lot to read in that you wanted much more involvement from the board in the superintendent's determination about hiring, you know, frankly, that's not the way it's been done in this district, and it's not the way it's done in most districts that I've ever been aware of. So, you know, I, I understand voicing your opinion and concern, it is your opinion, I don't think it would have reached a consensus on it, but it doesn't mean that there wasn't a process, and it definitely doesn't mean that the process was wrong or flawed, it is your opinion, you're entitled to that.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, unfortunately, none of us can act individually, I think you're trying to do so now. The board has to act, and, I apologize, the board has to act, and, you know, the board acted, so, you know, I apologize to Dr. Corr for having to sit through this, I apologize to Dr. Harrison to be reviewed in public, but, listen, I think you made your positions clear, and I think we should move on.
I don't think it's, I object to the characterization.
Well, I don't know, John, these are personnel matters that are not supposed to be talked about in public.
What's not supposed to be talked about in public? The fact that we want more input into the, I'm just, Ted, if you have my line and ask you what you, what you think should be talked about in public, what your basis would be. Should we not state that we feel that we should have more visibility to the public process in public? Is that not?
So what does that mean, John?
That's what I, that's one of the two things I said.
Okay, and that's very general, what you want.
Yeah, that's what I said, I'd asked for input, and I'd asked for, you know, more than once to, could we see resumes, could we see something there, and, and, so that was one part.
And you were told.
And what just stopped? Am I allowed not to say that in public? Because is that, is that one of the small enumerated set of things that we're, that says we can't talk about in public? I don't think so. So you're, so that's, that's what I'm saying. Okay, so, right, or you disagree with it?
I'm about to disagree with you on a lot of things.
Yeah, but I just wanna sort of turn it down, that's one thing I said.
You're parsing my words.
I understand, I understand.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, if I may interject, I, I'm questioning the, I understand, the points have been made on either side. John has opinion, your opinion has been heard.
Yeah.
Robin has opinion.
I just, to the point of view of saying my opinion is.
You're, and, and I think we're at a point where I think we can move on, opinions have been heard, Bob objects to it, I think the conversation's not gonna become productive at this point. I respectfully request that we move along with the agenda, and if there's other discussion items to have, let's have them and let's move on.
And that's fair.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve section twelve point two?
Sold.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know.
Do we have?
The exercise.
Hey.
Oh, all those not in favor. Okay.
I didn't, I'm sorry, it's, I, she doesn't, she, you need to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear Robin's vote.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Aye, so it's four to one. Okay, section twelve point three, any discussion there? Got a motion to approve section twelve point three?
Sold.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, twelve point four, the appointment of Joyce Chapnick as our elementary principal of Main Street School, any discussion there? Got a motion to approve twelve point four?
Sold.
Can we just, the heavier area for this is what?
As it means, principal.
Principal. Which is.
Elementary.
Stated from elementary principal or secretary.
They changed it to just principal.
Got a motion to approve section twelve point four?
Sold.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
I have a question to process. Do we need a motion to appoint Rena, or is that inherent in, isn't appointment one thing and contact the second thing? Are they two distinct things?
But she was already appointed.
For a three-year probationary.
She was appointed, reached out to her resignation?
No, she was appointed as assistant superintendent. Oh, wait.
But she was, she.
We never approved her resignation.
Was it approved?
We didn't approve her resignation.
I don't think we ever approved her.
We did not approve her resignation.
We didn't approve her resignation, I would think that you're saying she.
She had taken a leave of absence.
The letter that we need to approve, we never actually, it never took effect, so it doesn't matter?
We had, you had approved her leave of absence from her position as principal and appointed her as assistant superintendent for a three-year probation.
So we don't need to reappoint her?
No.
Because she apparently.
Okay.
Okay, anything on twelve point five?
No.
Okay, I have a motion to approve section twelve point five?
Sold.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Twelve point six, any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I understand that, I'm sure that there is adequate, we can never discuss another contract, and maybe something that I consider, or maybe something that we never talked about. I would actually like to request that the board takes a five-minute break into executive session so we can discuss another six appointments as a contract. Need a, would that be allowed for us?
Yeah, I guess that's fine, but you didn't bring it up in the executive session we just had, so it's a little strange, but I'm happy to.
I didn't know, I, I'm guessing. All right, let's go.
We need a motion, and a need motion is to carry.
Bob makes a motion.
Got a motion to adjourn to executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have them still.
Yep.
A motion to, are we doing adjourned? Or come back on again? Where are the votes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the items in section twelve point six?
Sold.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so four, zero, and one. Is there anything in twelve point seven through twelve point eleven that needs, or twelve point twelve we need to talk about? I'll wait, I'll ask.
May I stop everybody for a second? So, we just had like an acyclical portion business here, but, but we jumped over, I think this is exactly the moment for a person, someone that's an amazing leader, for multiple people in this room, and, and, you know, I want to start at the, I want to certainly thank and congratulate everybody that was just appointed within all of the agreements, the letter agreements that were just approved, primarily looking at district office staff from Rena, Beth, Elaine, for the incredible work that they do on behalf of the district on a daily basis, and of course, Gary, Debbie, Lisa, and Anne Marie, who is new to our team and doing a great job. Fortunate to have such wonderful people here, and, and I certainly send my personal appreciation gratitude for everything they do and look forward to another year with you. And then I want to stop and acknowledge my friend and colleague, Joyce Chapnick, for her appointment as the Main Street School principal, and it's a very proud moment for us, and you're an outstanding leader, you have served our district for a year, the teaching army facilitator, you did an excellent job, and were so impressive in your work, that you became assistant principal at the middle school and did amazing work, and had a tremendous partnership with Mr. Sotile, together you are an outstanding team, and now I think I, would echo the words of all my district colleagues in the room, that we're thrilled to be working with you as the next principal of Main Street School. So, on behalf of the district, personally, I want to extend my congratulations to you.
I'd also like to thank Dr. Corr, you taught my children, you've been a big member of this district, and served it well for very long, and I, I knew when you decided there was some stuff to happen, and you were finding, and I would have put that up there, so I appreciate you sticking with us, taking a great job. Okay, is there anything in twelve seven through twelve twelve? So I'll take those collectively, so got a motion to approve items twelve seven through twelve twelve?
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, zero, zero, all those standing, or Joe, not pressing. Before we get to thirteen, I did want to thank the IEF, Paul Caposa, Second, PTSA, and the donations to the people who donated to the Paul Savolari and Nora Scholarship Fund, thank you all for your support of the district. Is there anything in section thirteen that we need to take out separately? None? Got a motion to approve, okay, got a motion to approve all of section thirteen?
Sold.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you very much to all, as I mentioned at the beginning, I have a personal matter I need to run to, so I'm going to turn the chair off over to Mrs. Kerners, David Hance, and.
Please.
It's just policies. Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
The policies, which are section eight, section eight. So, are there any, we'll take them as a whole, if there's any that people want to pull out.
Is this supposed to be the one that I want?
Sure.
This is just for discussion purposes.
Right.
So we're not accepting, we don't have to accept these terms.
No.
Oh, it's first reading.
It's just the first reading.
All right, sorry, right, right, so we're just, so let's just go through it.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, there's no, no action.
Okay, so, policy eight point one, any questions or comments?
To find the printout of those, we would, is it in Word docs?
Yes, they're attached, and there's also under policies for review under letter.
Right. Is there, is there a copy for the arguments?
Oh, yes.
I have one.
Okay, so we're not.
I mean, I could start when you're looking, because I have two questions on it. There's a sentence in there that says that subject to staff supervision measures, I guess safety measures may be disabled.
Mm-hmm.
Or relaxed. I guess I'm, I just want to know, should that be more specific, like, should there be a specific, instead of subject to staff supervision, should, should someone?
Can you point to exactly where you are, please?
One, two, like, the second full paragraph, under the two bullet points.
Subject to staff supervision.
I'm just wondering if, if there should be something more formal, that if, if someone is gonna be able to have the measures relaxed, then there needs to be like a sign off, like an administrator needs to sign off on that approval, because this is a little general, and, and, you know, it seems like if we're going through all the trouble to have all the internet safety, then there should be some processes in place for how we're gonna, you know, let people not be part of that.
Well, this is only for adults, right?
This is just for teachers, right, so if a teacher wants to have it disabled, then there just needs to be some, you know, they need to go to principal, and the principal needs to say, yeah, you're right, and then there's like a track record, otherwise, it just seems like it's a little.
So if you go to, if you go and look in section three of the regulation, which I think is on the fourth page, monitoring of online activities, we're saying, I'm just looking here and thinking with you, that the technology coordinator is responsible for monitoring, he or she expects review, all users shall have no expectation of privacy.
It's on page four.
So.
I mean, if you want to look at it and get back to us, we're not gonna, this is just for reading, we don't need to get response to everything.
What is the, what is the need, I understand that internet safety is generally a good thing, but what is the need that the policy is, you know, what is the need that the policy is?
When we look at items eight one, eight two, eight three, eight four, eight five, they are all policies that are spelled out in law that school districts must have, that specific to the internet policy, internet safety policy, there are some legal references, laws that you can see, the Children's Protection, Internet Protection Act, so on and so forth that are identified on page two, that call for us to, to make these particular statements. The committee, when we reviewed this, it, there were some areas that, you know, we weren't totally comfortable being the ones that define what pornography is, or what the case may be, but when we ran it by council and looking to try to, you know, not put it on the board's shoulders to come with those definitions, council came back and identified that those are particular definitions that are spelled out in law and recommended for inclusion accordingly.
So pornography is, that's in the regulation?
Yeah, it's in the regulation, so they're actually, that the object.
So, so this is legally required as we went to do, obviously, there's a lot of.
No, no, it just, we were at a compliance, I don't know specifically when it should have been in place, all I know is this and the, it's, the four items that follow are policies that we should have had in place, and it was identified by our, our risk auditors.
Right.
So we'll, we'll look at a suggestion for our, the regulation pertaining to item in eight one.
Does the law say we have to have literally a policy on internet safety, or just essentially have to cover these issues somewhere?
Specifically says internet safety.
Opposite, opposite.
That's how it was named in our audits review when, when I met with our attorneys after we received that information sometime late winter, and approved that, when I met with the attorneys to review it, and that they agreed, and resulted in this, and it's how it's spelled out in, by New York school boards.
Down eight one, okay, eight two, any questions? Would you be.
Position why and say why.
Of students.
And this is all.
And this is also something that is required.
Correct. Yeah.
These, just to be clear too, these policies were drafted by Ingrid Smith or they take it from these?
I couldn't tell you one by one at this point because obviously we've gone through a number of them over, with the committee over the last couple of months. The majority of them, they used the school board's model as their foundation and made any suggestions. We then brought them, we had some review with the administrators in the district, brought them to the committee for a couple rounds of review, back to the attorneys to make sure we were compliant and to you tonight. So, in most cases, and looking at the formatting of this one, yes, this was the school board's model.
In the policy that we're talking about, there was a sort of paragraph that was struck that was added in, and I just didn't know.
Eight point two.
Yeah, so it talks about universal design principles, and the committee was not comfortable with the fact that it was, that there is actually something identified in law that you're supposed to consider, that you actually use that phrase, which is a particular methodology that they should consider using that. And so, when we reviewed it as a committee, felt that it was overstating it, and it's only a suggestion in the law. So, we asked council how we could pare this down, so we're not committing ourselves to this particular universal design. And the strike throughs that you see before you were, grew from the committee's work and council's approval.
Striking this doesn't put us...
No, they said that we are compliant because it only references that they, in this case, and shows that we don't accept school boards' things blindly, that council did feel after committee review that it was overstated.
Okay, eight point three. Security breach and...
Yes.
Okay, eight point five.
So, this, the answer to the question, why we need this eight point five, is that you're going to be...
Yeah.
I guess I would like to hear from Gus on this. It just seems a little funny to have a policy that says that we have people working, just, I don't, I don't...
To say that we have people, that we've done the searches that we do for every other position in the district.
Yeah, yeah.
It's provided for within IDEA, that we have to ensure that we have qualified people that are representative of our students' needs. We saw, it's silly too, we questioned it and said, "Why do we need to do this?" We don't go through and publish how, you know, we believe we do this, this, and this. We have a variety of policies that talk about how we hire staff in general, some encapsulate some of this, some don't. But this is kind of the minimum standard of what you have to provide by law.
And this is, to me, the thing that's a little, excuse, school sector, excuse me, I think it's still, but I guess the federal law says, yeah, schools have to...
Is it federal or is it...
IDEA is federal.
Right.
And does that then mean, that that, as a layperson, I assume that just means that you, the superintendent of the district, needs to make sure that X, Y, and Z happen, and you're responsible to do whatever the board does. Does that necessarily mean we have to have a policy on that, rather than just...
It needs to be, as the superintendent, I'm charged with carrying out the operating protocols, policies of the district, therefore it needs to be memorialized in the district manual.
Even when it's legalized in law?
I would say yes, only if it's that simple, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, not that it really affects my thing.
No. Well, so much of what you see in the policy.
Policy book to serve this task.
It's a four-inch binder that's, if you see it in paper version, so yeah, it's a thick binder.
Have you ever seen the paper version?
Yeah. Fortunately, Lane has to maintain one, so.
Okay. Eight point five.
No, so we just did six.
Oh, oh, eight point six, I'm sorry. Hard to read. Eight points, do we have any, give any more time on any of the...
Do I have any more? Yeah, eight point seven.
Okay, eight point seven, school district records.
This is you, Bill.
Yeah, I, this, this is not in the category of required by law.
We already have it in the policy.
Okay. Sorry, give me a second. Yeah, my act as operator. Can you summarize what was changed? Is that just too many things?
Quite honestly, I don't...
Yeah, the, it was very scattered, and it wasn't detail oriented, and there was an update that came in. Bev, do you remember? I'm trying to think what it was.
You did a checkup.
Yeah, it's not showing this version, but we gave you what it was in another version.
Yeah, it's basically on the regulation that's attached to it, it memorializes how we're supposed to deal with FOIL requests, and also we've now incorporated the actual application form into the regulation. So, it's...
I don't, okay, so here's the thing I don't like about the, and again, I haven't read the regulation part, because I never did, and I didn't realize they were doing these documents. The first paragraph of this really could be read as saying we're going to, it says it's a policy of the board to inform members of the public about the administration of operation of public schools in court, which is... I don't know, I don't know that I accept that our policy is just be only give public information required to give by law.
That's just for this policy. So, it's outlining that this policy addresses whatever is in the Freedom of Information law, the public officer's law.
Yeah, that's not how it reads. If you take it out of context, it would be much more broadly than that, my apologies. I know, I understand how you intend, but...
Do you have a suggestion that would maintain the spirit of what's there but would clarify your point?
Let me, well... What if you take out in accordance with the Freedom of Information law, would that really change something?
I think that's what needs to be there.
I would say, I would say take out or modify inform members of the public.
It's, it is something that it is...
It is the policy of the board of education to...
Comply with.
...Freedom of Information law in state of New York. But, you know, I don't think, you know, I don't want to have anything to appear to define our policy.
So, it's the policy of the origin board to, just simply to comply with the Freedom of Information? You got that?
Yeah, we'll run it by Gus.
Yeah, we'll run it by the attorney.
Yeah. Because that makes it very more specific. Unless in fact the other thing, which is our general policy of informing the public. Yeah, we have opinions, probably issues of transparency, like, but...
Great.
That, that, and the general, as the board, we have a general need to revise this to its...
Which one do you want?
The, the, eight point seven.
Eight point seven.
Yeah, the school...
I leave that, so...
Yeah, I'm trying to, Bev, it was pertaining to the release of information regarding FOIL, and then the existing policy that we had, when attorneys looked at it, they said that it was inadequate in how it was prepared. So, they suggested a new formatting that covered all of the details because it was broken into like two different policies, like records were one and it was all over the place. So, they melded it into one concise one.
Okay, ready to move on? I believe we are up to presentation and discussion.
Eight point eight. We didn't, no, we didn't do thirteen.
Oh, I thought you said consent agenda, but we didn't accept it. Did he do a motion and accept the rest of the consent agenda, or did Bam just address it? We didn't do thirteen?
We never did the consent agenda.
Okay.
We're doing best sections.
Right, no, but I thought when he said, he said thanks to the PTA, thanks to the donations, I kind of, in my mind, I thought, okay. Okay, so then I'm going to take the rest as a whole, so can I have a motion?
No, just thirteen.
Just thirteen?
Just thirteen.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Okay, so can I have a motion to accept section all of thirteen?
So, we did that. We did that?
We did.
If you were...
Oh, that's when I...
Right, right, you were...
Yeah, it was done.
That's what I thought, okay, so then we're up to fourteen, see? I was adding the first one. Okay, so presentations, moving right along. So, first one up is the school facility report cards.
You all have copies of the school report cards, they were sent to you. Basically, the, again, you see these annually, it's an annual requirement from the state of New York since 1998, and it's basically to ensure that the district is in compliance with all of the mandated services that we have to do in order to ensure and protect the health and safety of students and staff. And some of the reports that are contained within the report card are to ensure that we are in compliance with the building condition survey, the annual visual reports, five-year facility plan, the health and safety committee, lead testing, AHR, which is asbestos hazard, integrated pest management, indoor air quality, hazardous chemicals, and radon testing. So, basically, it's the same report, but I have to present to you each year one report on each building.
Anything that sticks out as a point that we need to...
No, we're in total compliance with all of the mandated reporting and maintenance.
Okay, so, thank you. Finally, we get to the technology presentation.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have to say thank.
I'll make your presentation show this.
Okay, so, we're going to shift gears a little bit, and we're going to actually talk about students and student work. So, we are really excited tonight to present technology, kind of where we are right now and where we see ourselves going forward. And for anyone who actually looked at the slide, I think the magic number ended up being sixty-six, sixty-six slides, yes, in fact, that's true. But most of the slides, we promised that every single slide will take an hour each, but actually, it's that many slides because we really wanted to make sure that we were giving the board, but also audience and anyone who is watching at home, sort of a window in to what we're doing in district with technology. And sometimes, it's not always so evident what practices we have in place, and a lot goes on each and every day, and sometimes we even take it for granted. We just watch it, we see it, we see what kids are doing, and I think we forget sometimes that, that parents and the Board of Education doesn't always get the opportunity to have that window in to what are our kids doing on a daily basis? What programs are we offering for our students? Because in order for us to define where we want to go, we also need to look a little bit at where we've been, as well as where, what we currently have. So, I'm going to do thirty seconds of history. So, our technology has been, I guess I would say, up and down. We've gone through different levels of staffing at different times, we've gone, we, for many years, we had a director of technology, and then for many years, we didn't have a director of technology. So, we've had a lot of shifts in terms of how much staffing we have, and I'm not always sure this clarity on who's actually teaching technology in our district, and what are our teachers doing versus what are our technology teachers doing versus what are, what is Jesse Lebinski doing in his role, and how is he supporting teachers? So, tonight, we hope to take you through some really nice examples of the work that is going on in our schools, as well as some of our good thinking about how we move forward. So, one of the things that we're really proud of is that when you walk around district and you speak to teachers, we have developed a real, I think, a common understanding of what we believe and what we think is important for our students. And this whole idea of twenty-first century learners, although I think now people are saying we have to move from twenty-first to twenty-second, but this idea of how are we preparing kids for when they leave the Irvington School District is about a lot of different pieces. So, you'll see in our goal around being part of a global society and understanding what that is, providing rigorous, authentic learning experiences. You can't have that conversation anymore without talking about what does technology look like as part of that process. We'll talk tonight a little bit about the reality as our students, our high school students, we need to start to look at what is our, what do our schools look like, and how do our schools reflect what our kids' lives are looking like? And the whole idea of a comprehensive curriculum that includes defined outcomes, but those outcomes need to be on many levels, including what we expect technology to look like. The twenty-first century skills and dispositions, problem solver, flexible thinker, collaborative learner, et cetera, you hear teachers talking this language. Well, one of the ways that we want to make sure that we're engaging our students is through the use of technology and building those dispositions through that critical thinking process. So, tonight, we're going to take you through a, maybe a journey that looks at what are the essential systems and practices? What are the pieces that we need to have in place as a school district if we want to feel that we're successful and that we're providing those opportunities for our students? And how do we find the balance between the systems and practices that must be there? They must be in place while we're making sure we're focusing on innovation, making sure that our teachers believe that risk-taking is a good thing in teaching and learning? That how do we allow for those strategies and opportunities and our teachers to feel that we're there and we're supporting the ideas and the innovation that they're bringing forward? We're going to do that through several different lenses, and you can see from the triangle, infrastructure really is part and parcel. We cannot move forward or exist without infrastructure. And we talk about all kinds of infrastructure. Tonight, we're going to talk about hardware and software, and we're going to outline some pieces, but you have to have infrastructure if you want to have integration of technology in our classrooms, if we want to have a clearly defined technology curriculum, and if we want to support teaching and learning with professional development. Our infrastructure also is steeped in standards. It's not random, it's not arbitrary. We don't just say, "Oh, let's do this," or "Let's try that." We're looking at the standards that are set forth, and just like whether it's the Common Core standards or any other New York State standards that we've been living by, there are standards that guide technology in education. And just, there are, we listed the few here actually that we use, there are others, but I'm going to just share examples from the Common Core. The Common Core has defined technology expectations. The New York State Technology Standards, Jesse's going to take you through some pieces where that is the mandate, those are the expectations, those are not our options, that is what we're expect, we're expected to teach so that we can define what students are going to know and be able to do. The Computer Science K-12 standards, you'll see that our computer programming reflects those. And then ISTI, the International Standards for Technology in Education, are standards that have been around for at least twenty years, and those are standards that give us the guideline and the framework for thinking about what do our, what should our schools look like? So, in the Common Core, I take you just specifically to anchor standard six. So, all year long, we've been sharing some Common Core with you, and so here's an example of what is expected with the integration of keyboarding and kids using technology for, to publish, to create. And so, you will see in K through three, it specifically speaks to the standard of publishing and writing. In grades four and then on to five and six, it specifically states, type a minimum of one page, two pages, three pages. And as you go up, there's continues, standard six continues to have expectations of the application of technology in our classrooms. The technology... The technology curriculum tonight that we're going to share with you is a look at what are we doing K-5? What does six, eight look like? And what are the electives that we currently have in our schools that our students have been the opportunity to engage in and the kind of work that's being produced as a result of this work? So we're going to start with some samples of student work and we share with you here the ISTI standards. So, you know what I didn't, I thought, I thought that three, the three across was there. I'll start here. I'm flexible in my thinking. It's a 21st century skill, by the way. ISTI standards, so...
About twenty seconds.
We'll see how that works out. So the ISTI standards actually have three categories, students, teachers, and administrators. So somewhere in here, that slide should be there. So we're going to start with students. So you can see, according to the ISTI standards, they don't actually name technology. They don't name the programs that we want students to have. They actually indicate the dispositions that we also have as part of our, our goals. And so we're going to take you through a very quick journey of what does it look like from kindergarten to a senior in high school currently in the Irvington School District. So in Dow's Lane, as many of you know, this year, we were able to bring back the technology teacher in the, at both Dow's Lane and Main Street School after a one-year hiatus. And what we decided to do was we took a model that we had actually implemented already at Main Street School, which was that each teacher partners with Gwen Carney, our technology teacher, and we use all four core subject areas, science, social studies, ELA, and math. And throughout the year, our students engage in projects that are grounded in each one of the core subject areas. So tonight, we're going to share with you some samples of what that looks like. So in kindergarten, I'm just going to highlight on these slides what you're seeing. You're seeing the project. So this was related to, it's plants, insects, and animals. And you'll see it was related to the science curriculum and you also will notice that we've indicated what software, because part of our goal is to have our students experience all different kinds of software as they move up through the years, throughout the year and then as they move up through the years. So this was a project that our kindergartners did using KidPix related to their science curriculum. In first grade, we did a unit, our math unit was on graphing. And as you can see, it was related to math module three where they sort and graph data. And this was a, this had a lot of different components from different worksheets and thinking that kids did along with their writing about data and collecting data. And then where they actually used their program, it's called Graphers, and they create, they took their data, they surveyed the kids in their class, and they then graphed the data that they collected on, I want to say, oh, it's cookies and, and transportation. In second grade, we, again, I'm showing you a sample from each grade in just one of the core that they did over the course of the year. So this was their social studies and it was on communities. And for this, they used Google Image and Word and they created timelines. So kids understood how to use Word and how to create and add pictures. And they also understood the essence in the creation of a timeline and how we tell a story over time. In third grade, again, social studies and communities, they did an internet scavenger hunt and the kids created a PowerPoint. So here was the scavenger hunt and here was the criteria for the PowerPoint. So the students had to have. And remember, one of the most significant changes, and I think the most important changes that we saw, especially at Dow's Lane this year, was that in the past, technology was a special. So the teachers would come and they would drop the kids off. So the teachers weren't exposed or doing this work. So it was very hard to continue anything once the technology teacher wasn't there because the teachers weren't part of the work. So that model is completely changed. So everything you're seeing here was done with the teachers and the projects are actually planned with the teachers as well.
Just question of information, does that mean that there is, the kids are spending more time with the teacher than they did? There's less time devoted to specials now?
No, that, that's required. So there, no, it's just they don't use technology as a special.
I see, so they're doing something else instead?
Exactly.
You know what they're doing?
Library.
Library, okay. Which they were already alternating with technology.
Exactly, exactly. So at Main Street School, and this is just a quick grid, so you can just see that this is our plan over the course of the year. The sample that we're sharing with you tonight is for fourth grade, it was our science plants unit and they used a product called Glogster. And so this is a very extensive unit for our fourth graders. I think it lasts probably half a year. And they do all kinds of data collection and graphing and writing. And they then use Glogster. And what you're seeing there is where the kids took all the information, information they researched and, and data they collected and they put it into a presentation using a product called Glogster. In fifth grade, we use CorelDraw and this, again, was related to this particular unit, was math and math module five, volume of solid figures. And you can see, these are just two examples of how the kids use CorelDraw, which is, they really constructed this from scratch to create their prisms. So, so at K-5, I know we had to really come up with a plan. We have one teacher and we have a lot of grades and a lot of teachers and a lot of kids. And we have one person supporting our technology program. So as we talk through and we make plans for moving forward, we need to be clear that if we want to define what we want, we also need to look and consider, how do we support that work? So I'm really proud of the work K-5 and I think we've been able to work with kids at all different grades over the entire course of the year. So Jesse's going to talk through the middle school.
Can I just, one question on, or maybe you're going to get to this. In terms of hardware, what are we using?
Sixty-six.
They're doing, they're doing this stuff on something. I'm just kind of wondering what it is.
So this is actually a great place to segue because sixth grade, as was mentioned earlier, is the first point where students are actually getting technology instruction delivered through courses as opposed to project-based learning. Now, what we have listed up here is the New York State Standards for Technology Education. So as was also mentioned earlier, this is the first point where there are actually articulated standards that we have to meet as we start to deliver instruction for technology. So that's, that's done in the middle school. And what I'm going to do is take you through some examples of projects. And you'll see listed on the project slide, what standard it connects to in terms of the New York State Standards. Now, we actually feel that those standards give us a lot of flexibility in terms of the way we deliver that. So we're able to, our teachers this year, for the first time, were able to really discuss with other teachers in the building what the needs, what their needs were as far as our students in technology and they were able to adjust the projects to account for that and also work with our technology teacher in the elementary buildings to find out how to segue that, what they've been doing in the elementary schools to what they're delivering at the middle school. So the first project we're going to take a look at is a card game that students are developing where they initially start by taking a look at programming components on code.org, very simple programming concepts. And what they do is they go back and, not on the computer, develop a card game. And then what they're able to do is develop pseudo-code, which I'll show you right here, which is essentially what I'm going to call JavaScript Lite. So it's without having the nuances and worrying about the semicolons and the parentheses, but really just articulating the logical reasoning behind how their card game will operate. So if you take a look at the first line without getting too much into it, if you draw a card and the card is black and the card, and it also has a value greater than five, the player would earn ten points. So they're learning the logical programming concepts without worrying about the nuances of actually doing that coding. And as you'll start to see, it actually builds into some things that we're doing later on.
This is, sorry, this is sixth grade?
Yeah.
Sixth grade.
Okay.
Switching gears a little bit from programming, also at the sixth grade level, you can see it's connected to impacts of technology and really here, we're talking about the environment and our community, a digital citizenship, digital citizenship project where students are actually discussing components of digital citizenship and creating flyers on how they would deliver that information to other students. So actually, what they're doing here is modeling how they would deliver information. So it actually helps with not just the concept, the concepts itself around digital citizenship, but also presentation skills and how they're going to deliver instruction to other, not instruction, but...
What are they using for the flyers? Are they, are they on a map or are they, I mean, is it a Word document or?
It's PC-based. I think they're using Publisher.
I think they're using...
Oh, it's like a software package?
Software, right. Now, at the seventh grade level, this is actually interesting because it's not something you would normally associate with technology when we talk about technology. It's a bridge-building project. And if you take a look at some of the pictures here, you can see we're actually talking about students getting in, working on engineering concepts to build a bridge with, they use balsa wood. And the goal is to see, to design a bridge, which in the lower left-hand corner, you could see there's like a piece with two rods that they have the bridge sitting over. All the bridges sit on that and what they do is they start to weigh it down with sand. And I would love to show you a sample of a bridge, but since the goal of the project is to break the bridge with as much weight as possible, I would really just be bringing in like pieces of bridges. So what they do is design the bridges and then again, weigh it down and their success is determined by how they, how much weight the bridge is able to support. So in that tie, just jumping back a slide a second, that actually links directly to engineering standards that are in place as part of those New York State Standards. Now, in the eighth grade, a project we really wanted to highlight, and this was actually a project that was a result of a, an IEF grant, so we're really grateful that they were able to help us out with that. It's a robotics project where these robotics kits, they're able to put together the components and then there's a main piece, you can see it in the left picture on the bottom, that clear plastic piece, yep, which she's pointing to, that's essentially the brain of the, of the piece which connects to the PC. Students are able to drag and drop instructions to specific gears. And then we'll show you a quick video of what it looks like once they're able to, it's already, okay. If you go to the...
Oh, was it there, sorry?
Oh, you know, up in the second tab.
Ah, you know.
Okay, she got it. She knows the password. So that's, that's an overview of some projects they're doing in the middle school. Now, technology in the high school is a little bit different because New York State requires us to deliver those standards at the middle school level. At the high school, technology is delivered through courses that are electives. So students can elect to take those courses. This year, for the first time in a few years, we were able to offer the computer programming one, two sequence that we had offered a few years ago. Now, there are no specific standards in terms of, and I know this question's been asked before, for instance, what languages we're supposed to teach. There are no requirements and if you talk, if, we did a survey of districts in the region and everyone really has a different sequence. So a few years ago, the last time we offered it, we were doing Visual Basic with a combination of Alice, which is, is a, an object-oriented programming language, which I'll show you a sample of in a couple of minutes, and Java, which leads into the AP course that you're, that we could offer. This year, as we started to develop the full-year sequence, we did Alice segueing into Java. So a half-year of Alice, which would then lead to a computer programming two sequence in the second semester of full Java programming. Up ahead. So the sample I'm going to show you is a project that was done in Alice. It was the final project of the computer programming one course. You can see what we have here is a list of requirements based on the concepts that were taught in that first half of the year. So as long as the project contained those, those pieces, it was given a full, a full grade. And Alice is the kind of thing that's better when it's the splitters who teach this course. Essentially, it's done via drag and drop of objects. So you can add an object in, a person, and you can say, move person ten feet in this direction. Now, Alice is nice because it allows you to teach the concepts of object-oriented programming without having to know the programming since you could really just say the commands that you want the object to do. A nice feature of it that a lot, that makes it a nice pairing with Java is that it allows you to see your code, what your code would look like if you were to convert it into Java. So as the students start to make the transition, they can look back at the work they did in the first half of the year and see what it looks like when it's transposed into that code. Now, it can be used to just simply animate, where you just can play and watch an animation, or it can be more interactive in nature where artists keystrokes in order for action to happen. So this final project was a student who made a quick animation, just giving us instructions. It'll zoom in to what it wants us to do and then simply with the mouse, I click the star button and it's like a carnival game where I'm trying to aim at the little things and it'll throw the ball and hit it. And the object will go away.
It taught you.
So...
It's decorative, right?
That's an example of the final project from that first-year sequence. Now, Project Lead the Way, Project Lead the Way, I know it's also been discussed at Board meetings before. There's a suite of courses we could offer. The course we offer right now is the Intro to Engineering course, in which they use the Inventor software. And actually, they mentioned the Puzzle Cube, which was given to me as a cube and several of us have been in the back during the, it fell apart and we've all been working to do it. Apparently, the students are smarter than us because we can't put it back together. But as you can see, they designed it using the software and then using the 3D printer, they're able to print out the actual, the actual puzzle cube.
I can't put it together, I just wanted you guys to say...
I mean, looking forward with Project Lead the Way, are there plans? Are you thinking that we will be able to add back more of a sequence or more of what we, you know, have access to through Project Lead the Way in the future?
Uh, whether we can grow the courses we offer through Project Lead the Way.
Yes. Oh, I forgot the question.
Oh, that was a question.
But are we planning to do it like next year? Because again, we all know it was adopted as a three-year sequence and I guess we've only run it...
I guess, I mean, I, let me answer that now, but I guess I just, there, there's a lot of complications to it. In other words, yes, we are, there's no question, our goal is to expand this program. They actually just came out with what looks like an awesome middle school curriculum. They actually have an elementary curriculum. So there's a lot of potential for us with this. The high school issue for us is linked to certification and staffing. So in other words, they have like a bioengineering course. Well, the question is, well, who needs to be, who needs to be certified for that? So I, I think, I would say that we're probably more likely to be able to have more of a sequence moving into, not next year, but the following school year. We need to work out a lot of issues before we can figure out. And also, what you're going to see, because Jesse's going to actually show you, almost every course you're seeing here is also being taught by the same teacher. So we also don't have a lot of staffing for technology. So that's another issue. So it's layered, but it's definitely the goal.
The one other piece I just wanted, oh, do you have a question, John?
Well, it kind of takes away from this. I'm, I'll ask it later.
Let's keep going with this and then I, because I'm happy to answer those questions.
Yeah, but I, I think it's, it's good, you've got a good, good thing going.
Thank you. Thank you. So one other thing I...
Let's see what this says.
Yeah, I was about to say, one, one thing I wanted to show from the engineering course, I saw this today and I just wanted to bring it in. In addition to the Puzzle Cube, students were actually designing trains as well as the rails that they run on. Unfortunately, it wasn't, the wheels were printed, but we couldn't mount them today so I couldn't have it run along the rails. But this was actually designed by the students on the software and then printed using the 3D printer. So we printed that out here and it was actually pretty impressive, so I don't know if you want to just circulate it around.
So we have one, we have a single 3D printer somewhere?
Currently, we have a single 3D printer.
But there is another one, that was just approved by the IAF for next year.
How much do they cost?
The maker, the maker bot that we purchased was around like twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred?
Yeah.
Cool.
And the, I know one other question usually comes up with that is the cartridges.
Oh.
Honestly, fifty dollars. We, we purchased four at the beginning of the year and we haven't had to refill them.
So it's a better deal than regular printers where the cartridges end up...
In a weird, yeah, in a weird way. I think this year, we were curious, since it was our first year with the 3D printer, we weren't really sure, how much do we need? What's it going to look like with all the students printing stuff? And the fact, we've gotten a lot more bang for our buck, I guess, and the kids have been really excited to design projects for it. And you'll see, it actually is tied into some of the other courses as well as we work our way through this. So that's, that's the Project Lead the Way course. There's also the Architectural Design course and you can see the software they use for the Architectural Design course. There's two Autodesk software packages as well as Google SketchUp and Publisher, which was previously referred to. Now, one of the great things, and there were so many projects we wanted to include just to show you, is that there's such a vast array of students that take these courses. I mean, we have students who are really engaged in like AP-level courses and students who aren't really engaged in those type of courses. And really, everything we're seeing here is so amazing. And what some students have been doing is taking the projects they've been designing and they could actually print them out, or not print them out, but design them physically. I think what they used to do, you've seen projects in the hallway where they designed it out of cardboard. And actually, what we did was, if you take a look at, on the left, and I think I have that one around here somewhere, they're able to actually print small-scale models of, of the buildings they've designed. And so one that I didn't actually get to include on this slide, a picture of, we had a student design a brownstone for New York City and they were able to print out a small-sized model of that. So it didn't take up much equipment, but they're so excited to get those materials printed and see what it looks like in real, in real physical space. So it's really exciting. And then those are just some other products of the 3D printer. We had a student... And then, those are just some other products of the 3D printer, we had a student design a keychain and print that out, a ring, and then actually, this middle one was just an example of some of the things they're experimenting with, where they're able to take templates that are available online for certain, like a thingiverse, for things like screws that they're able to print out and then use in other projects. So, it's not just a matter of them designing themselves, but there's also an array of things out there where they can use to build into projects they're already working with.
For the record, you're missing a piece. I've assembled this thing so many ways, you're definitely missing a piece.
It was whole.
It was whole.
It was whole, and it was right-
Really?
You can't be missing a piece, it's got the right number of cubes there.
How do you know?
Because it had two-
A half hour I spent on this, I-
Hi, this is-
Yep.
Okay, so now, Jesse took you through some of the pieces that are actually part of what we might call our, more of our technology types of programs, but we also are doing really good work in many other classrooms, and we are, recently, I want to say in the last two years, we've really built our suite of software for music. And so, we wanted to just share with you two examples, a middle school and a high school example of how our students through the music program. One of the points we're trying to make tonight is, we really want to give you a window into how many different kinds of kids, kids who are interested in all kinds of subject areas. It's not just one thing or another thing, it's not just about programming, but here are our kids in music, in our general music class, in our theory class, and through orchestra, who are engaging in using music as part of the program. Do you want, yep. No, 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 click on the, oh. Yeah, but- So you can see here, this is a pretty basic, if you look at the, at the description of it, it's, this was from a general music 7 class, so for those of you who may not know, our kids who take general music are students who are not enrolled in a performance group. So in middle school, you're required to meet the music requirement according to New York State. So if you're not into performance music, you must take general music. So these are students who are in our general music program, and you can see the assignment, right, an original composition using the follow, following musical elements, et cetera. So this is just an example, and again, probably at one of our lower levels, being middle school, 7th grade, so-
What's the technology aspect of this? I missed that.
So, let me go back. So we have several, we have a suite of music software.
Which, which does, do they, do they write the composition?
Yes.
And then it, and they-
They write it, and then they put, they-
Put it somehow into the software-
And it plays it back.
Play it back, I see, rather than having to master an instrument to play it.
And then they can, well, and then they can hear their own music.
I see, and then they can, but they're, are they actually writing it physically on paper?
Yeah, so I, let me just share up here, so, following music elements, I'm just wondering if, if the purpose of the assignment is get students to better understand the music. I think, I thought he actually said exactly how it works. I've never actually used the program, so I don't know. But yes, the kids write and put, enter the music in-
Okay.
And then it plays it back.
Okay.
And then they tweak it. So, from 7th grade general music all the way to music theory, so here's a really nice example. Again, the assignment, choose a genre of music, listen to as many pieces as possible, so this was not something that was just done simply or lightly, and this is ultimately the product that this particular student produced. And it was hard to pick, they sent me lots of samples. Yep. I know. It's amazing. Up top, play. Over, middle, play. Over the word "done" there. So this is another nice example, and obviously, you can see, there's a little bit of a different level of sophistication, and that was what we would hope for.
Well, it's, this is also an elective course in the high school, right?
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
As opposed to the general class that, you know.
Absolutely. And that, and that's, and I'm glad you're saying that, John, because that's actually our point. Our point is that there's lots of different entry points for students, depending on their area of interest. So here's another example, so we also offer at the high school digital photography, so you can see here, this course is taught by, taught by Pat Di Benedetto, and I want to say Kathleen Tetra this year. And you can see, again, technology that was used for the assignment, so the, we list the different technology that we used, and the thing that, you know, Pat pointed out is, all of the above technology tools correlate with industry standards. Again, we have an expectation of a level of sophistication at the high school level, and he talks about the goals of the, of the assignment, and the students had to create a landscape, was an option. And so again, this was examples of how our kids use digital photography, and this is ongoing work, and our students do, and again, they, he gave us so many samples, I think I loved settling on these two particular faces, though. So here are the ISTI standards for teachers, so we need to have a guideline and a standard for what we expect in our classrooms. So again, I'm going to ask you to notice that this is under integration now of technology, so this is what we're really looking to be happening in all of our classrooms, so how do we name it? How do we tell, say to teachers, here's what we expect you to know and be able to do, so that we can engage our students. Again, what you'll notice is, nobody's listing specific software that our teachers should be using, but really, they're, they're, the standards speak more to the dispositions that we would like teachers to engage in, where they're really using all kinds of digital products and applying that kind of thinking to provide learning experiences for our students. So, through that lens, we also need to consider, what does professional development look like, and how can our professional development grow and support the integration of technology in our classroom? And so, one of the pieces that we've listed, or I should say, this list includes very different types of applications. So Jesse's going to talk you through some of the professional development opportunities that we've designed this year for teachers, but you'll also notice on that list Rubicon Atlas Curriculum Mapping, because our curriculum mapping software is part of our systems and our structures that are allowing us to write our curriculum. So as we go through, it's important to highlight how many different areas technology is playing a role, and how we need to address many, many different aspects of technology when we talk about technology in our schools.
So, one piece in particular I wanted to talk about before I move into some specific examples is the Quad Village initiative that we started, and this actually came, or developed from a conversation that started between the superintendents, the Assistant Superintendents for Curriculum Instruction, and the Technology Directors in the Quad Villages earlier this year, when we got together to really talk about what we're doing in our different districts, where we are, where we're heading, and whether or not there was a possibility of taking advantage of our collective knowledge, as opposed to trying to tackle some of these issues on our own. And what we settled on was a professional development consortium, so to speak, between the Quad Villages, where we surveyed our respective districts to find out where our areas of expertise were, and also where we wanted to kind of head, and we began having course offerings over the course of the spring, where individuals from each of the districts held courses that were open to any teachers within the Quad Villages. So for instance, I hosted, I hosted a course here where the majority of the attendees were Dobbs and Arslay, whereas Irvington teachers were attending courses over in Hastings and so forth. Oh, all of this was done in partnership with the Edith Winthrop Teacher Center, so that, we've been facilitating it through them. As part of a Phase 2, when we were talking about what our next step was, we realized that there was a really good opportunity this summer to begin to have, to really push some of those initiatives we wanted to kick off with in the fall, over the summer. So we began to create a course catalog, which we just sent to Edith Winthrop for finalization, where we are offering a large number of courses over the summer for teachers to attend, and offering them multiple times. And one of the nice pieces of that is, in some cases, in particularly around Google Apps for Education, we are offering a course in, I'll just give you, for instance, around Google Spreadsheets and Forms, where we're offering it in three of the four districts, and we're working together to standardize that curriculum, so that we know as a Quad Village, that all teachers are getting the same instruction delivered to them, so there's an expectation that we are all on the same level, so as we move forward, we can kind of leverage the power of all four districts, as opposed to just, you know, trying to operate independently on our own. And that's been really exciting. So what I wanted to do is just, before we start heading into big picture stuff, talk about a couple of examples of initiatives that we did this year, with regards to professional development in technology. Now, the first one I wanted to talk about is flipped learning, and it's not odd to talk about it in technology, but in reality, it's really an instructional initiative. There's a technology component to it, but oftentimes, when people talk about flipped learning, it gets lumped in with technology. And before I talk about the PD piece and how we delivered that this year, I just wanted to give you, I saw this as an opportunity to really share what an experience in a flipped learning setting would look like. So I think that sometimes gets lost in translation when we talk about flipped learning. So I'm just going to walk you quickly through what a student in high school chemistry would experience when they did a flipped lesson this year.
It's open?
Uh, it's open on the, on the, yeah. So just to frame it before you hit play, what would happen is, students would go home and their assignment for the evening would be to watch a video, which was created by, the third one, yep, is to watch a video, you can see the length of time is nine minutes, watch a video with a companion worksheet that was assigned to them. So you'll hear, we're only going to show a minute of it, not the whole nine minutes, and it's chemistry, I know it can get a little, even though it's Dave, uh, yeah.
Welcome to this video in the moles chapter. Today, we're going to continue working on mass data in our mole calculations, and specifically work on how to determine the empirical formula of a compound by looking at its percent composition. And we're going to do it through poetry with a little ELA lens, which is lots of fun. There's three things we're going to need to accomplish this. First is going to be our periodic table of elements. Second is going to be our calculator, and third's going to be our companion worksheet. So please pause the video now and get those. So let's look at the first problem that we have to do here. It's going to read, calculate the empirical formula of a compound which is composed of 38.67% carbon, 16.22% hydrogen, and 45.11% nitrogen. Now, clearly, there's a lot of compounds out there that are made of those three elements, so here's a strategy on how to do this. There are four easy steps that we can use to solve a problem like this, and here they are. Pause the video now and copy these steps. Okay, nobody wants to remember something like this, so what we're going to do is teach you these four steps by using a short poem which rhymes with you will be able to remember on your test. So here we go. The way it looks. Percent to mass, mass to mole, divide by small, and multiply till whole. Four easy lines to be able to solve a problem like that. I'm going to go through what each of these lines means and walk you through the process, and then you're going to be able to practice this on your own.
So I will tell Dave Whitehead that you're all ready to basically take a test on this. So, you get a sense for what the video is, and I think you could see where the technology component comes in, is because the development of that content that is shown to students is really where that assistance comes in as far as how to do that. Dave happens to be very proficient in it, as you could see, his use of soundtrack and licensing for Paramount. So what students have in addition to the video, which is posted online for them, is not only do they have the companion worksheet, but they're also given the answer key to that is made available to them online. So the idea is that when they come into class the next day, they've watched that video with the, and followed the instructions as far as the pausing goes, they've done the companion worksheet, they've checked their answers, and when the class period starts, what they go through is a period called burning questions, where basically they discuss any questions that might still be in play. And what was interesting as we kind of observed that in the class setting is, very often, the teacher did not have to respond during those, so it would start, someone would have a question, another student would handle answering that question. It wasn't something that was being pushed on by the teacher to do that, it was just happening. The teacher was standing in front of the room and kind of jumping in when they had to either correct something or steer the conversation in another direction. Once that happened, there was a second scaffolded skills worksheet which is available to them in class, and this was done in a variety of different ways. In this class, it happened to be one worksheet, in some of the other classes that were experimenting with flipped learning, or using flipped learning, they were, they were tiering specific worksheets to differentiate levels of learners. And oftentimes, they, the students were able to identify for themselves which level they should be on, and they would group themselves according to those levels, and the teacher was able to work the room and ensure that they were correctly placed in those groups. Once, as the teachers circulated through the room, observing that, they were able to regroup and go over that, those skill, skills worksheets by the end of the course period. So what's happening during that lesson is, rather than the teacher delivering instruction and being in the front of the room, and I remember this from my time in the classroom, spending most of my time in the front of the room talking with my students, I'm now walking around the room and actively engaging with everyone, and I have a very good sense of where my students are by the end of that class period before I begin the next lesson. So, in terms of the flipped learning cohort that we, that we did this year, it was a partnership with the Lyric, and what we did was, we had a cohort of eight teachers. Now, we were very mindful, as we put together the cohort, that we wanted to have teachers across, not only both buildings, but across every discipline. So we didn't want, it's very easy when you're thinking about this, it's very easy to conceptualize how you might flip learning in a math or science classroom, a little less obvious than how you would do it in some other subjects. So we wanted to be sure that we had people from every subject area in order to do that. We began with an initial kickoff day. Now, some of our teachers had attended a Lyric workshop over the summer where-
Just, I'm just going to go over some of this, because this is not the technology part.
Okay, so you want me to just-
So I guess we wanted to give you a window into the flipped learning, but I'm going to move us forward in this, because this is really an example of the PD. So what we're trying to say is that the professional development, because that's where this started, was, one of the things that we did was give teachers the capacity and the skill to, if they were going to want to use a flipped learning model, or use technology in their classrooms, the PD that we gave them was to facilitate that kind of learning.
So, I'm- Okay.
Yeah. So I think we can just keep going past flipped learning, unless you have a specific-
I mean, this is a highlight of, you could really see that it was tiered in such a way that we were able to really structure the experience, so it wasn't just done haphazardly, we were really organized in terms of how we were delivering that, going, doing observations, providing feedback, collecting data, and really circulating through the whole thing.
Okay. And then the technology that, that was, that's something that they had to learn, is that, you said, you kept saying something called Lyric, is that?
Is that the name of a program?
Uh, the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, so-
No, so that's not technology, this is just, what are they-
Oh, no, 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 no.
But they're learning a technology in order to-
We subscribe to BOSI's Learning Regional Information Center, Model Schools, and that is a program as part of the, as part of BOSI's-
Yeah.
That actually is designed to support, the structure supports schools across Westchester in implementing, integrating technology in classrooms. And so this was just one piece that they offered.
But is there a particular technology that teachers are using for this, or is it really their different teachers?
So, in this cohort model, we left it open to the teacher, so as part of it, we introduced them to the various technologies they could use. I, I want to say I was pleasantly surprised, but I'm not quite sure, every teacher went in a different direction, and every teacher had a different experience level, and I think one of the great things about this was, because we tried to identify teachers from different subject areas, we at some point had to kind of shoulder tap to really select teachers who weren't always the people who were leaders in technology, and I think we had a really positive experience getting those teachers on board, and with, probably the best aspect of it was seeing that those teachers wanted to continue on with the work afterwards.
So an example, though, I just want to take us back to the technology teachers use. So, there were some people who did a PowerPoint with a voiceover, basically, whereas there are other people who had, were far more skilled, and so the opportunity was to learn different kinds of applications that they could use in their classrooms, whether it be for flipped, by the way, or, or enough in some other way, so it's not only for flipped.
And do they have somebody they can go to for sort of advice and support and, you know? Okay.
That's why I wanted to say, I wanted to say I was pleasantly surprised, but when you're supporting seven different, you know, pieces, but it was, it was actually great that the teachers were, were doing that. Okay. Quickly, I just wanted to provide a slide with some of the feedback we received from students about the experience. Now, without going through and reading, just to kind of give you the highlight, the main reason students seemed to prefer it was that they were able to do it at their own pace. In terms of number of viewing times, it was usually an average of, of round two, with some skewing way higher, some only needing to watch once, but it seemed like because they were able to pause the videos, go back and re-watch it, it seemed to be ideal. In terms of students who prefer the, the- In terms of students who prefer the traditional, it seemed to be that some students wanted it occasionally as opposed to more frequently. Then you can see some of the comments there.
What, what are they being, this is a survey monkey or something that was?
We used a Google form to collect data.
Okay. What are they being asked when they say, when you're asking, what's the question they're answering?
There were a series of questions that they were asked.
They're not, they're not point-blank being asked, you prefer this to that?
No, actually, the, the, this specifically came from a more general comment and observations, but we did survey for specific, like targeted data, like how many times are you watching it, what time are you watching, what device are you using, to try to get a sense of, okay, so what's, I think we had specific ideas about what was happening going in, and then we saw some different things.
So you're really getting, you're not really just asking their preference, you're asking a bunch of more factual questions.
Oh, yeah, we wanted to also get a sense of how these, like, what the process is as they're starting to go through the experience of watching these. The second piece I wanted to talk about was the Chromebook pilot. Again, thank you to the IEF, if any IEF members are here, for providing that grant. So it was a two-phase pilot, we're actually in phase two right now. So the first was with our seniors, they had them for, for two months in, I think when we had actually presented it here, we had initially stated that it was going to be AP Literature and AP Economics, and what we were really fortunate to find out was, there was so much overlap with, with super forensics that we needed to just provide one of the Chromebooks we already had to a student there, it was like two Chromebooks, actually. And we were able to fill that course and make that part of the pilot as well. And since the teacher was part of phase two of the pilot, it worked out seamlessly because then we were able to segue right into phase two of our pilot. So currently, we're doing it at the high school in the honors chemistry in a one-to-one model. Now, in the middle school, it differs just slightly because it's not a one-to-one model where they're taking the devices with them to all their classes and going home. We have them in a sixth and seventh grade math classes and an eighth grade science class which is classroom-based, so they're using it in that class, but not taking them home with them in the middle school. So some feedback on the Chromebooks. Again, just kind of trying to generalize what's here, it seemed like the collaborative piece was the real plus. The cons, and actually, this was really helpful because this is phase one feedback, so we were able to take a lot of this feedback and make adjustments for phase two. So a lot of the phase one feedback that was negative seemed to be around the fact that the Chromebook device isn't as useful when they're not connected to Wi-Fi, so we just simply went to our management console, added offline docs, and we're waiting to see what the feedback is now that they're able to access the documents while they're offline. And again, another comment was that the laptop is, a laptop is more versatile, the cost difference.
Can you say that again? They could use the Chromebooks without Wi-Fi?
Yep, there's an offline app that we can add to it which allows them to store their drive docs offline where they can make the edits when they connect to any Wi-Fi, it'll then re-upload any changes to their drive.
But what's the, what's the status of the Wi-Fi? We have Wi-Fi, don't we?
We're actually going to cover that.
Thank you.
Keep you hanging at the edge of your seat.
You're just like setting these things up, so, you know.
So I guess where are we going with this? So we talked about, a little bit about what we've done with professional development with Quad Village, with flipped learning. And I guess where we're headed is, looking at it through that lens of innovation, we're trying to approach, find out what the best approach is to teaching today's learner. So I think, you know, initially I thought, well, our students are different from 10 years ago, but the truth is, they're different from even four or five years ago. So it's, we constantly have to make adjustments to our approaches to teaching, and with technology in particular, the changes are happening so rapidly, it really requires some flexibility in terms of our approach to how we're going to deliver that. So we talked about some of the things that we've been doing and where we're headed, we talked about flipped learning, we talked about the Chromebooks. As we talk about wireless, we'll be talking about the bring your own device, so leveraging the fact that students have devices already and can use the Wi-Fi to connect to those in an instructional setting. And then Google Apps for Education, so that's been a large push, particularly as we talk about the Quad Village initiative, in the type of professional development we're delivering, as we begin to roll out our Google Apps for Education domain, that's been tied directly to our Chromebook initiative, because in order to use Chromebooks, you have to have a Google Apps domain in place. So as we begin to roll that out, we take a look at just some of the advantages of having that Google Apps domain in place, collaboration, efficiency, flexibility, and our, increasing our ability to communicate effectively. And as we start to think about technology on the whole, you can see what we have here as a diagram, just as we were just kind of spitballing and talking about the different pieces involved in technology in our district, you could see, it's a hodgepodge of things. It's so many things that we have to keep in mind as we start to look at the big picture around technology in our district. So as we start to move forward, the question is, how do we really tie these things together into a system and a process that allows us to adjust our instructional design to impact students in the most effective way using technology? So bringing it back to that initial slide we saw with the triangle where you saw how infrastructure kind of sits across everything, our approach to infrastructure is really a four-pronged approach. It's not, and when we talk about infrastructure, generally, we're thinking, okay, hardware infrastructure, I know that with a technology hat, that's always what I'm thinking. But in reality, there's a bunch of different approaches to it. So as we talk about infrastructure, what we're really talking about is hardware, and you can see how teachers are using hardware for teaching and learning, so when we talk about that, we're really talking about computers, smart boards, document cameras. And then our systems and infrastructure, and we have Mario Caliguri here, who's our project manager from Edge Tech, who oversees our systems. So we talk about the things like that, how do we, how do we ensure that our infrastructure is, is keeping up with the needs of what we have to do in order to deliver, deliver technology to our students effectively? In terms of software, software's changed a lot since I started in this district a decade ago. Everything was software-based, now we talk about mostly web-based delivery for almost everything we do, very few software pieces. We also talk about online tools, blogs, how we're allowing students to research online. Heading back to that systems and infrastructure hat, our student information systems, how we're keeping track of our finances, and then with things like TeachScape, right, how we're doing observations and evaluations of our teachers to comply with APPR. Now, in addition to hardware and software, there's also these two pieces, which we don't normally think is infrastructure, communication, how are we delivering, how are we communicating with our community? So we've been extremely active with Facebook, delivering email blasts, and also grades and information through Home Access Center, which is that component of eSchool Plus that allows us to provide that information to parents, as well as Edline, which is our district web portal. And then policies, which I'm sure I don't have to get into, you guys had a long discussion about that a few minutes ago. So we view, those are the four big pieces. When we talk about infrastructure, that sits across all those things, delivery of instruction, of technology instruction, how we integrate technology in the classroom, those are all things that we think about across the whole thing. Now, John, just to get back to your earlier question about Wi-Fi, I just wanted to give a quick overview of where we currently stand within, with our hardware infrastructure in the district, because I do think that's an important piece to just look at as we talk about moving forward. So in terms of the physical devices we manage, when I did a presentation a few years ago, we were doing an initiative of hardware virtualization to reduce the number of machines that we had in our, in our placement cycle, so that, I want to say it went down from about, Mario would say from, yeah, about 800 to 540. And we were able to do that through the use of virtualized workstation. So we actually have 540 physical desktops now, down from that number of about 800, with 133 being virtualized. We manage about 80 laptops, and then under those additional, that number should actually be a little bit more, the additional mobile devices, because I don't think that includes the Chromebooks, that would be our Chromebooks and other devices like that.
Now, these numbers include the numbers that staff and faculty are using as well as those that are available.
So this includes teacher workstations, computers you'd see in lab settings, computers you'd see in libraries, correct?
And, and, yeah, whatever teachers might have on their, in their, for their own use, right?
Yeah, district-owned devices.
Yeah, district-owned, but I assume they have one in the classroom.
Not for their own, but for kids.
But they don't have one for themselves? They don't, no, what do teachers?
What do you mean by for themselves?
Why, well, I'm...
No.
What do teachers use for their own?
No, so whenever, so whenever in the elementary classrooms, we have pods of computers, the teacher, I would say predominantly uses the one near the, connected to the smartboard, but kids are on those computers as well, there's no teacher.
Okay, so there's no teacher separate computer.
It's a shared resource.
Okay.
Okay. To directly get to your question before about the current status of Wi-Fi, so district-wide, where we stand is, our campus is using a coverage model for Wi-Fi. So we were able to put in a wireless infrastructure, which we built into the budget over the course of a few years, so that our infrastructure was prepared for that build-out that we anticipated having. So the systems are in place in the backend as far as our servers, and what we were able to do was slowly start to build the campus, so we're in a coverage as opposed to a saturation model. So in a coverage model, as you walk through campus, you can get Wi-Fi, but if a lot of people are on it at the same time, it's not, it's not going to be able to handle that. So ultimately, what you do is begin with that coverage model and build up to that saturation model. So where we stand right now is a coverage model on the campus. You can see as far as bandwidth goes, and I don't remember, I don't know if you guys remember, but a couple of years ago, we had that discussion, we jumped up, it was a big jump, it was like from 7 to 50. And even at 50, as we start to introduce more devices via wireless, you know, we start to have that conversation about where we need to go from there. And building the building, we're at 1 gigabits per second, and that really isn't, that's just a product of being on our end of the, without having to go out to the internet, just building the building, we're going right over the wire, nothing to it. So, is it you or is it me? Oh, yeah, it's you.
So Main Street and Dow's Lane don't have Wi-Fi, or?
Well, well, sort of.
But they don't need, do they need it?
So, so it's a good question, because as you know, they do have some laptops, and there is an iPad initiative at the building. What we have to do, because we don't have a wireless infrastructure in place building-wide, is we have wireless hubs which can be plugged into the wall to allow that cart, so to speak, to become wireless. As it moves from room to room, we then have to reconnect it to the wall to ensure that it's...
That doesn't sound very difficult, then.
So the problem with that is, we have, through grant funding, title grant funding from the state, we actually have been able to purchase iPads for our ESL population at Main Street School. And so while she has a hub in her classroom, the goal was to be able to provide that as a support for our students in their classrooms, but because Main Street School's not wireless, they cannot extend the use of that beyond her classroom. So that's just an example. So where do we go? We hope tonight that we shared with you some examples of really the great stuff that's going on in our district, great things teachers are doing and kids are doing, and opportunities that we're providing. But I think we're all on the same page, and we want to continue to grow that, and we want to really be able to articulate what those expectations are and where we would like to see the district over the next year, two years, or three years. So again, we just brought up this graphic again, just to remind you that we have to keep our eye on the infrastructure, because if, the Main Street School example is a good example, there's a limitation in not having wireless at Main Street right now for our students. So we need to keep our eye on the infrastructure and how we're growing that, and we want to make sure that we're articulating our curriculum, both our integration in the classroom as well as a technology curriculum, and ensure that we're planning to prepare teachers so that they can do this work. So how do we do this? Well, we build a vision. And so the bullets here are just a framework for thinking about how do we build the vision? And what we hope that we shared with you are just the pieces that we think need to be in place for us to have a really well-developed, thoughtful technology plan. One of the things that I just want to highlight again, when I talk about the history and is where we've been as a district, so 10, 12 years ago, Director of Technology, we actually used those ISTI standards, we actually had articulated the expectations grade by grade by grade. But if you don't tend to your curriculum and you don't tend to your systems and your programs, eventually, they start to dissipate, and that's exactly what happened. So there was work done that has been gone now for quite a few years. So we are in the building mode, and that's great, and so there's work for us to do. We used to have a district-wide technology committee of teachers and students and administrators, and they articulated a lot of the needs of the district. So we need to think about how do we get there and how does a technology plan get developed? So through this building of the vision, it's just some ideas about our, and I shouldn't say ideas, it's just the steps that we need to include as we move forward and we build this technology plan.
So as we were having that conversation about wireless, and we talked about that we were currently in a coverage model on the campus, I wanted to just give you an idea of what we're talking about for the next two years with, in terms of our technology lease, and how we have that structured. So without, I mean, and I can answer questions about it, but we've had this conversation before with the board about that we were on a five-year replacement cycle as far as our desktops. So this current year, what we're looking at is replacing Main Street, they're up in the cycle. So we're replacing all of the Main Street machines, but as we start to plan to build that wireless piece out, what we're planning on doing this year is, in addition to our replacement cycles for devices, building in the wireless infrastructure for campus to turn that into a saturation model so we could fully begin with BYOD in the fall. For the following year, what we're looking at doing is then putting the wireless infrastructure in place for Dow's and Main Street. Now, one thing that we haven't really discussed, but it's a consideration, is the park, the requirements for park assessment. So New York State has required that by, by 2015, 16, that we have the ability to test our students online, and that piece requires us to have that wireless infrastructure in place. So what we've done is structured this in a two-tiered way so that we were able to level out what that cost is going to be over the course of the next two years, and still put the infrastructure in place that's necessary.
When did you say park is coming?
15, 16.
Current plan, Lisa, I know it's been pushed on.
Yeah, current plan is 15, 16, but New York State has made no promises, has not bought into the final decision, so, and they have also indicated that there could be allowances to avoid a technology introduction the first couple of years if districts aren't able to catch up. But New York hasn't made the full-fledged commitment, even though they're a governing board member.
So, but, but you're on track then, in, in the maybe somewhat unlikely event that New York State will require us to be there?
I think more likely than not that it's going to happen.
But with, well, anyway, okay, so.
But we're there, we'll be there, yes, the objective is to be prepared.
Well, I think park is a piece of it, I think the big consideration for us is also, as we've talked about, how we're looking to deliver innovation and instruction to our students using mobile devices. Without the infrastructure in place, it really does hinder our ability to do some of those initiatives.
Where, where are we in be, in bring your, bring your own device? I've lost track of where we are, have we?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Can we, I have lots of questions.
Okay, fine.
And I was just going to suggest that maybe we would group our questions together for another meeting rather than doing it tonight, because I literally have nothing left, I would, I'm, I'm not even supposed to be here for help reasons, nothing serious, but I just, I guess I have another, I, so if we can wrap up and then...
There's only 25 more slides.
Yeah, you know, no, I know, two slides. But just in terms of questions, if we can just...
It's just going to be hard for me to remember, but, you know.
Or I could excuse myself because I just, I should not.
I mean, I can try to make, I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy to do that, what I will do is just write down what I have and then, yeah, but...
This evening, set up another meeting?
What would we do, set it up for, try to carve some time out of our next meeting?
We, we could talk about what that would look like, and then I would encourage you, if you have questions, and if the board is agreeable with what Phil has suggested, jot them down, if you want to send them to, in advance, we could be more efficient, prepared to answer questions potentially, too, so.
But in part, the, the part of the benefit of the questions is just to kind of have a conversation in the meeting and...
Yeah, I think that we would have Jesse.
Just be back.
That's fine, because I found this very interesting and informative in lots of ways.
It's an excellent presentation.
Yes, I agree with that. But there's a, there's definitely strands of it we'd want, we'd want, and Maria needs more time to solve this puzzle, but...
I put it down.
I actually, I actually looked to see if there was another piece, and there is no other, that is definitely, we'll see what happens tomorrow when I get back to them. Okay, so, okay, so where does that take us? How are we looking to move forward? So we've already started with the technology think tank, which we've had two, two sessions where we invited community members, as well as teachers, administrators, students, to discuss some of, some of those big-picture ideas on what we're looking to do in our districts with regards to technology. And a lot of our thinking has been, has been guided by the conversations we've had in those sessions. So we think it's a valuable piece, and we want to continue to have those sessions because that's how we get input from everyone as we start to, to push forward. In terms of crafting that plan that we talked about, in terms of that vision that Raina outlined, we're going to be putting together a technology leadership team, which will meet on a regular basis to take a look at those, to take a look at those issues regarding curriculum instruction, assessment, professional development in the district, and to help to really articulate what that, what that is going to look like. So we have that big-picture piece that's going to help, you know, bring those issues to light, and then that team that will help really dig down into the details to put that, to put that plan in place and the systems. Q and A, pictures of kids.
Happy kids.
Excellent job, thank you very much, Jesse, Raina.
We're tallying questions, are we?
Like, do we want to, I thought we were going to hold you, and ask something?
I think, yeah, deference to Phil's...
Yes, so we're going to hold our questions and carve out time.
Yeah, so we'll connect over, how we want to do that next time.
Yeah.
I guess the next thing is, the next public meeting is June, what is it? 17th at 7:30 PM.
And, and sorry, one other thing on the tech, it occurs to me that it's at least conceivable, though we don't have a very big audience, that some of the audience might have questions too, that they were going to, for this, on this presentation, I don't know, would want to defer that to, or the...
I would say if there's any, we have to have, I think by, we have to have public speaks anyhow, so I think... So if they wanted to ask anything on the, maybe, since they don't necessarily want, you know, need to show up again.
So I guess, does anyone have, any community comments and or questions?
Yeah.
But that would also include anything about the presentation or anything else, in section 15, yes? Yes?
Give the microphone, please.
My name is Vesna Loberic, I own a piece of property on Riverview Road, which has a six-foot walkway, which currently the Irvington students use for, I guess, you know, shortcut to Riverview Road, from Riverview Road to the school. So, as part of my planning board process, several school board members, along with the school attorney, attended and requested that an easement be granted over this six-foot strip of land which I own for the Irvington School District. Well, we agreed to grant this easement when we received our planning board approval. So now, in the meantime, the easement was drawn up with the village attorney several years ago. I received my planning board approval several months ago. The easement agreement, which was drawn up between the two attorneys, the school attorney and our attorney, was forwarded, and it asked to be signed off on, so I could get my building permit. So this is three months later, I'm still waiting for that easement to be signed off on. Joseph Mattson, who's representing the school as the school attorney, requested from my attorney initially, survey the title, a copy of the title, the resolution submitted. Few weeks later, he requested the same paperwork again, submitted. Third month into it, Mr. Mattson requested us, us, the applicants, and this is what he wrote, "As we have discussed the school district expenses for this, for its own engineer/surveyor/attorney entitled report, with respect to your client's request for district cooperation and connection with an easement, that your client will record in favor of the districts are agreed to be capped at $5,000." So we paid the school $5,000 over a month ago for this easement to be signed off on. As of right now, as of today, the easement still hasn't been signed. I cannot proceed with my construction, because it's pending upon this easement, and it's on a delay. I had to go back to zoning board to extend my variance, and which was granted, but, you know, I think we should put an end, and I'm asking the board if you could please look into it.
Yeah, so Mrs. Lober, I certainly encourage you to contact me directly, I am, as you referenced, it is a legal matter, so I don't want to discuss it publicly, and I would think there would be value in us sharing notes, because our notes and timelines and degrees of cooperation don't align with what you're reporting, so I think we could probably benefit from, from a conversation.
This letter is dated May 9th of 2014, which requested monies, $5,000, came directly emailed from your attorney.
Again, I don't want to be rude, ma'am, but I don't want to discuss a legal matter.
But I'm here to speak, and this is why I'm here, it's in a public meeting, and I'm here as a public, I waited three and a half hours, so I think I am due, allowed to be spoken to. So anyway, so the check was, actually, the check was cashed on May 15th. The $5,000 check was cashed May 15th, but my easement's still not signed off on.
Yeah, no, certainly, as you said, we'll follow up with, with our attorneys, and we appreciate your concern and your cooperation, and understand that we do have a commitment to resolve this, and on our end, we will follow up with our attorney, and you certainly can feel free to reach out to us personally as well. Yeah.
Next public meeting will be June 17th here, and before the meeting at 6:30, there